One, two. Call to order a continuation of town normal budget hearings. Continuations from Tuesday, January 26, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Nord. Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
The governor has issued a disaster declaration relating to the public health concerns caused by a statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As mayor, I've determined that a continuation of an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the risk of exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from an indoor gathering, and that the remote meeting is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the council staff and the general public. So we'll jump right in. Ms. Reese, do you have any comments before we continue on with this, or should I just?
Just very brief comments, mayor, just simply to introduce our agenda for this afternoon. In terms of the budget work session, you obviously you have a very busy evening planned, so we're going to start with budget topics. We where we left off the other day was with Parks and Recreation. We have Parks and Recreation Director Doug Damery on the line as well as Assistant Director for Parks, Mr. Kotlinski. So between Doug and Jean, they are going to go over the Parks and Recreation budget. Parks and Recreation can be found on page 150 of your proposed budget, so I'm going to turn it over to Doug.
Right ahead, Doug. And welcome back.
Thank you. Yeah, it's good to be back. So, yeah, I'll just get into it. Thank you for taking the time to to hear our budget presentation here tonight. Jean is available for questions if we get into any details of anything that he would need to address. But anyway, so yeah, starting on page 150 is our administrative page for our budget. Overall, generally, our total budget is $7,649,805, and that's across several different funds as we sort our our funds based on some of the activity areas that we have in recreation. So kind of just to give you a general overview of of our approach coming into this year. We were somewhat, we were pretty conservative in our revenues, but you're going to see a pretty typical budget here that's going to be able to be adjusted throughout the the year as we're able to identify better what our guidelines are, what our limitations are, whether programs able to go or not, and we'll adjust up and down. But we were very aggressive in our record and our expense side. So you're going to see a correlation of if if we can't have a program, we should see a corresponding reduction in expenses. Yeah, so it should probably work out to the better, obviously, on the expense side if if we're unable to to do certain programs. But on that, on the flip side of that, we have a high ceiling on our revenues from where we're estimating our budget on on the revenue side. So but we we know we're going to go in with an idea that we're going to have to be very scalable with our programming, meaning we can go from 10 to 20 to 50, depending on what kind of program we're looking at, or down if we have to go down. Um. Interesting. A lot of that is going to just really be based upon our interest in our ability to host certain programs, whether we have the facilities are safe and and provide a healthy environment. The fees as we went in were looked at very closely as far as what kind of fees we would charge so that we would make sure that we're covering any direct expenses to that program. And if it's a popular program, we might have some, and we always have had, built in a lot of a hope for some cost recovery so that, you know, some of those bigger revenue generating programs can help carry programs that maybe are not as can't carry as much program revenue and cost recovery. Minimum wage will continue to be a challenge for us over the next five years, four years, as we see almost a dollar. Well, it will be a dollar increase every year as we improve. So that's going to have an impact and a challenge for us as we move forward. With those fee increases, though, or fee adjustments, I wouldn't even call them all increases, but with those fees potentially going, becoming a little bit more to help offset some of those expenses and minimum wage and other items that may be COVID-related or capacity-related. We also have a fee assistance program that we had identified, and we've talked about that the last couple of years. And that will give individuals that maybe are not quite as able to pay for some services, especially our before-school, after-school services, as well as our day camp services that tend to be popular, especially for daycare type scenarios. Those will be available. There is some limitation to how much you can use, so you can't just sign up for everything and get fee assistance. There is a little participation from the individual that they'll have to help out with to have a little skin in the game, as they say. And but but that we do have that available for a variety of different programs. With that, so under administration, obviously, I mean, we've been just adjusting as we've needed to this year, just adjusting to the safety protocols and so forth, and we will continue to do that. I think we've had a lot of success with addressing those things and keeping participants safe, keeping staff safe and so forth. We've also developed some some COVID-friendly programming. Esports is a new program that we just broke out here in January, and it's been pretty popular so far. And we're looking to not only expand that, but obviously, that is a program that we will continue past the any impact from COVID. So it's a popular program that we think we're going to be able to expand with, expand on as we move forward. Under administration, we also have the support for the AusLAD. Well, not support for the AusLAD, but but AusLAD grant is one of the projects that we'll be working on here this year, hopefully very soon. But under the administrative items funds, we have the SOAR program as one of our contracts. That's a the program that that serves special recreation and special needs population within the both the city of Bloomington and the town of Normal, and so that's our contribution there. And as well, we do have the fireworks, which we're hoping will be something that we can do this year, but that contract is also under administration. Turning to the next page, we have our aquatics. As you're well aware, we were not able to, based on the guidelines that were pretty much unknown when we were due to open, we were really a lot, too many unknowns for us to really move forward and and really not understanding how that was going to affect the budget in the big picture. So for financial reasons as much as guideline reasons, we did not choose to open last year. We are, we are very hopeful and optimistic that we will be able to open in some, at least in some form or another, and we're hoping to add near 100% capacity is our hope. But we're still a long way away from knowing where we'll be come June, I think it's June 3, when we open Anderson and the week before that, when we open up, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar up here, when we open up Fairview. So we may have some decisions to make moving forward as far as how we open exactly, but we are very optimistic we'll be able to open up. We do have replacement for a water heater in the Fairview, and that's actually for the pump house, which would heat the pool, the slide pool and the zero-def pool. And we also have a replacement pump at eight at the Anderson Aquatic Center within this budget, this category here. Moving on to aquatic concessions, not a lot. We are buying a new hot dog warmer this year, but not a lot to report there. Pretty typical budget. The Community Activity Center, again, a pretty typical budget. We may be impacted somewhat on revenue side from as far as rentals go, excuse me. But we'll do our best to to offer a safe environment there. Next item is page 158 is the golf course. Obviously, this was one of the programs this this year that had a lot of success, a lot of interest, and a very safe COVID-friendly activity. So we did very well adapting to this, and that was with being closed the entire month of of April, right? Yes, April, we were closed the entire month of April. So very positive year there. So we're really excited and hope to see that carry over into this upcoming year. From a golf course maintenance standpoint, in our budget, in the budget, we do have a the purchase of a dump trailer that is actually will replace our dump. Instead of replacing our dump truck, we have a one-ton dump truck out there. Instead of replacing that with a truck at $30,000 or more dollars, we're going to replace it with a dump trailer that can be pulled by one of our existing trucks, so they'll save us a some some. We're trying to reduce the fleet, our fleet, and so that is part of our strategy there to be able to maintain the ability to move material, dirt, sand, all that stuff. Underground fuel tank has been moved out. It's it's been, it's an acceptable approach there, so we've moved that from year one out to year three. So we'll address that issue in that year. Moving on to golf course concessions, nothing of note there as well. Next item is the Parks Maintenance Budget. Overall, $3,420,394. That is a one of our sort of our divisions that we 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 look at very specifically as a as kind of a subdivision of our department. We have reduced seasonal and part-time staff in this area. And as part of the budget impacts here. And then we have also reduced tree planting by about $10,000. That is something that we anticipate using a lot of mitigation money to move forward and to get that that accomplished. The dump, we are again are adding a dump trailer here as well in replacement of vehicle, same same approach. We also have a budget stump grinder attachment. This is a smaller grinder that allows us to get into a little bit smaller spaces than we're able to do with our large one that we have now. So yeah, it'll help us get get some smaller things done more effectively. We have an improvement to the Maxwell Park Basketball Court here. There's been some interest in improving basketball, the basketball courts with throughout the town, and they're 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 pretty small. They're the the goals aren't always the best quality, so we are looking at making an improvement there. And that that budget item will be about $10,000 to be able to do what we want to do there. Also, this is in year two, we have placed Carden Park Shelter as a replacement there, and that will actually go in conjunction with the CIP replacement of the Carden Park Playground that's also budgeted in year two. So we'll kind of address that entire Carden Park area then over there. And I see Karen has her hand up, and I hope I'm not too far beyond your question I just saw.
Yes, it was back on your first page, this the SOAR, the SOAR funding, how is that amount set?
That is estimated, that's in there, and then it's set based upon, oh, gosh, I don't know. It's applied to both Bloomington and Normal based upon, I think it's our, is it 20, no, 2% of EAV or something like that, isn't it? Pam, do you know?
Sorry, my, I had to unmute. I honestly don't know the formula. Bloomington shares their calculation with us, and we have funded, so we we pay Bloomington and they administer the program. So if Mr. Damery's not sure, I'm not sure, so that means our last choice would be, you know, Mr. Hune, if he has any idea, but otherwise, we'll we'll follow up to find out what that formula is, and I apologize for not knowing.
But but to your knowledge, it's not simply a flat amount.
Correct. It is. So it's a, it's a, it's a formula that's applied based on our size.
Okay.
So and I forget exactly, like I said, I think it might be EAV, but that's typically how these these partnerships are calculated in in my experience. But I cannot recall what the exact the formula is that's applied to whatever it is, EAV. So I can find that out and.
Well, it's that's line item is in the expenses that was presented to the council. So it it was kind of highlighted in the February expense report, so.
Yeah, and that's that that is an annual fee that is being paid today or being approved. It has been approved, but being presented tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just put a number in here based on what we believe it could be because the the it does change based on the year, you know, so that the, like I said, if it's an EAV, which is where it's typically calculated at, if it goes up, you know, that number could go up for us, and we usually estimate that on the high end and end up paying less.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Um, and I believe, so I think I believe I was done with Parks Maintenance there. We did have a lot of positive things we still were able to accomplish this year, even though we were at a reduced staffing level, and I'll just touch on those real quick. We were able to get a new picnic shelter out at Savannah Park that had been purchased prior to the fiscal year, and and so we did go ahead and get the work done internally to get that done. The same thing with our, some of our disc golf courses, which is part of the Maxwell Park AusLAD project. We had already had the debt baskets purchased and and a lot of that already done before COVID hit, so we were able to to go ahead and install those. We do have some improvements that we need to still get done with that part of it, which we'll be working on this year. We did get some some baseball diamonds, laser graded as well, again, internally, and some turf aeration projects done out of Champion Fields as well. So great opportunity with reduced use to be able to get in and get that work done in a way, so. And we were able to get the Constitution Trail done from Veterans Parkway to Vernon, which I know was a very popular project for the trail users out there in that that area. So moving on to the next page at 166, we have before-school and after-school. Obviously, that's a program that's been adjusting and flexing as the schools have adjusted their schedules to from remote to hybrid to now going back to full-time here next week. And so we've been adjusting right along with them. So we've we've been able to to do pretty well there. We are looking at some program fees being increased by 4% for the before-school program and 10% for the after-school program. Again, that we're still well below comparable markets in in after-school programming. And again, it, there's a lot more challenges there with the minimum wage and and some of the COVID-related things. So I think the fee is justified there.
Mr. Damery, I'm going to jump in real quick and indicate just for council and anyone who's listening. When when we talk percentages, I just want to put it in terms of a dollar value. So and also, this information can be found on page 342 of the proposed budget, where we had where we identify our various fees for Parks and Recreation. But the before-after-school program is looking to, or the before-school program would increase from $157 per nine-week session, so that would be the total amount per nine weeks, to $163 for a nine-week session. And then the after-school program increases from $229 for nine weeks to $249 for nine weeks.
And we offer four nine-week sessions throughout the year. And I see Councilman Cummings has her hand up, so I assume there's a question there.
Oh, and you're muted, Ms. Cummings.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I think you started kind of going down the path a little bit because I I know this, while it doesn't seem like a lot of money, I know for some COVID or non-COVID, the increase, because quite a few of the the students who are a part of the before and after-school program have parents who this is already a stretch for. And so I I think part of the question would be, how else, you know, can we? I don't know, what what other options do we have to assist with this program if if either they need it or in order for us to maintain it in the future so that we can come to a place of maybe flatteness out for a while? So that 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 isn't an impact there?
Yeah, well, and that's the that's where the fee assistance program kind of came in. We based, really based the formula that for that and the limitations on that based it that on any before-school, after-school need. So if if they, if a family needed that program, you know, as a as sort of a daycare component or, you know, childcare component, they they could apply for that, and and that fee assistance limit is set that it would cover all four sessions of the nine-week sessions. So that's kind of what we wanted to make sure we covered first before anything else. And because that's where we really did anticipate the biggest need being is is being in after-school. So with that, you know, I mean, I still think, like I said, that we're still well below comparable prices, and I do realize that it is a stretch for some, but we're trying to balance that between being being affordable and 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 creating a service for those that are in need as well as being able to to, you know, have that revenue stream kind of appropriate to what other markets are. So we take that balance, and we're able to put more into that fee assistance where it's needed. So if they qualify.
Yeah, and the other thing I'll mention, and council certainly is aware of this, but this is one of our Parks and Recreation programs in particular that's been hit hard by the minimum wage increase because it has quite a bit of staff. And but and so we've tried to incorporate that to our various fees, but we do also try to make sure we can provide the service to those who need it and a solution for funding, so.
Yeah. Correct. I think I saw Councilman Lorenz put her hand up first.
I did, yeah, all right. So I guess my question, because, I mean, this is all total about, you know, a little over half a million dollars that we spend on before and after school. And like you said, it is being hit hard by labor costs increasing. Just because now's the time to ask the provocative questions, you know, why why do we stay in the business of of childcare? And maybe there's a historical answer to this, I would hope, that maybe somebody can enlighten me on. It certainly is a good service, you know, I I hate to ask the question because, you know, the kiddos are important and having good care is important, and it seems like a right thing to do, but, you know, now is the time to ask these, maybe, like I said, provocative questions. So does, and and I guess part of maybe an answer I'd be looking for is, does Bloomington, does Bloomington do something similar?
Um, so I I'm not sure about the history of this, but I believe, I mean, there's park districts and parks and recreation departments across the state that are are very much into this port part of the business. I think that it's a a great way for us to provide a service that that individuals need onsite on this, at the school site. I know that they do, Unit 5 does work with agencies at their Bloomington schools. We're obviously in an eight-normal schools. So they work with a number of different organizations, and I don't know if Bloomington, if Bloomington Parks and Recreation is one of them. I'm not really sure about that, but I do know that they work with like the YMCA and and a couple other organizations. You know, overall, I, again, I think we're well below market comparables, meaning the YMCA and some of the others that that will do some of these after-school type programs or the private, for sure, the private ones. So we provide kind of that affordable route, but we still are able to offset our direct expenses and even have a pretty nice cost recovery on this. So we're we're more than covering our direct expenses on it. It is a lot of work and a lot of staff and a lot of time, but I think it's well worth it.
So as a follow-up to that, roughly, what are we recovering? I mean, versus what are we subsidizing?
I would have to look that up to be specific. But it, you know, we, yeah, I don't know, I'd I'd only want to venture a guess off the top of my head. I'd have to look at the the specific budget worksheets that we have staff do as they're preparing for these pricing and and the cost recovery.
Right. I've made a note about before-school and after-school, and we'll we'll share that information with council. It is not, this particular program is not typically subsidized at all. It does cover its costs. But but we'll find out the the specific cost recovery and let you know. I mean, it could be 100 or 102%, something like that. So we've we've been very confident in our rates to make sure it's covered the cost of the service. In historically, I think when we started this many years ago, it was unique in terms of our community and private sector organizations were typically performing the service. But now it's become part of our culture. It's a good relationship with Unit 5. But I think your questions are certainly valid. This is something we should always look at in terms of, are we competing with the private sector in this regard? You know, should we be in the before and after-school program business? I would say that the program we offer in Unit 5 schools, as Mr. Damery mentioned, eight schools within the town of Normal, is very popular, not only because of its price, but also because of its programming. The the children do their schoolwork, of course. We focus on STEM education. We also partner with the Children's Discovery Museum for programming. And then, of course, we do activities, which is what some of the rec staff does best, is a rec activity. So but we'll we'll gather information about the specific cost recovery on before and after-school, and I'll get that to you.
I think Ms. Smith had the next question.
Yes, and and I can speak to this being a very popular program because if anything, I think parents would like to see it expanded if if possible, but the explanation has been provided to me of some of the the reasons why that hasn't occurred, one of which is the the challenge of staffing since in the past, my understanding was that this program relied a lot on ISU students whose academic year ends before Unit 5 school year ends. How has the Parks and Rec been staffing services this year with ISU students not necessarily in the abundance that they had been in prior years?
We've had plenty of access to ISU students over the past year. It's really, you know, having remote learning, they're they're probably more available than they have been in the past because they can do their classwork when when they want as opposed to having class commitments maybe during work hours when we might need them. So it's really worked out well. You know, we still have issues with holidays and and prior to class starting, prior to them being onsite first for classes, even though they're still remote, you know, they they still were going home and that sort of thing. So, um, yeah, so we've been able to address that pretty, pretty, pretty effectively. There was another question I was going to address there in there, but I can't. I don't think you asked a question, but there was a comment.
It was a comment about how parents have expressed a desire for expanded offerings, but there are space limitations and availability at the schools is the response I've been provided.
That's exactly what I was going to say. That's exactly what I was gonna say, yeah. We are at a hundred percent capacity, and I think at seven of the eight sites, or six, at least six of the, excuse me, six of the eight sites. But, um, uh, site, uh, capacity at, at those sites is pretty limiting sometimes. We'd love to have more space and more, even more participants, but, uh, yeah, we just, that's, that's one of the limiting factors. And then the staffing, it does become a challenge at times when the students are not on campus.
Ms. Cummings.
Okay, thank you. Norm, we would probably have hashed some of these additional questions out, um, long before budget. And I know we talked about this last time, but, um, my brain got to rolling a little bit when Ms. Lorenz was talking about whether or not of us being in the business. And I, you know, I think it, we do offer a great service. I, I think something that if we were to ever go down that path, which I think we're very limited in, is partnering with other organizations. I think Bloomington has the majority of the organizations within their community that already has that footprint. So I think that's what kind of puts us in the unique position to be able to, um, offer. So I guess that would be the only thing, if we were to ever think or consider getting out of the business, if you will. I think we would have to certainly consider, um, the possibility, if, if there is any other organization that we could at least be, um, funded, if you will, in a way that might not be as equal in what we're paying out, but, um, maybe offset and help lower costs so that it's still cost effective. But I think this would be, you know, I think that we have an opportunity to continue to work with Unit Five and offer a great service. So just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I mean, I think we do, it, it'd be a pretty big void to fill, I think. Um, I think there's still a lot of demand that we could try to fill if we had the ability to. But if we didn't do it, I think it'd be, there'd be, it'd be a challenge for other organizations to try to pick up that slack as well, so. Alright, I'm gonna move, keep moving here. So I think I'm on page 168 with adult sports. There's really, uh, that's a pretty typical, um, budget there. We have eliminated, um, sports trips, uh, obviously a big unknown as far as what's going to be happening and what kind of a, um, crowd will be allowed even at sporting events. So we are putting that off. Haunted, or, I'm sorry, haunted trail, special events is the next category. We were able to adjust with our hunted trail and, and provide the candy corn lane. We offered a scavenger hunt program. This upcoming year, we are looking at alternatives, and we are, actually, we are already offering alternatives to the Easter egg hunt. We know we're not gonna be able to have that event at, at, uh, in the, in the timeframe in April, with 3,000 people coming to our event. So we are offered some alternatives there. And, um, so that is our plan with special events. Youth sports and teens, um, again, esports was a, a new program that we're offering there. Otherwise, um, same approach with, uh, with, uh, programming and so forth. Next page, performing arts. We are adding a fourth day camp site. We did that last year because of limited capacity. If we're hope, we're hopeful, we can increase those capacities back up to near normal numbers. If not, we'll still have four sites, um, but we'll be doing what we can. So we'll be, that's one of those areas, again, very popular program. We fill, um, fairly quickly, in one day, really, within actually hours, we, we fill this program. So we are gonna be, um, expanding it so that we have more capacity there. And if we are restricted in our capacity, we're still able to offer to a good number of, of participants. There is a fee adjustment in the, uh, the revenues there as well. We are moving, uh, from $250 for a three-week program to $275. So that's under $125 a week for, um, for day camp, for all-day programming. And, um, so we, then again, yeah, site, um, expenses and, and some of the challenges there, as well as minimum wage is another chat, program, summer before school, after school, that is a challenge for us. High school, uh, summer theater is a big, is a very popular program. We are only offering, usually we have two shows, two separate shows, one in June, one in July. We're only gonna offer one show this year and have more performances of the one show. So we're hoping to, to have a similar, um, a participant level, but maybe less expenditures on, on that. So hopefully a little bit more cost effective. So that is our goal on that program. Moving on to recreation concessions, nothing really special there. We are looking to do something out of, uh, to a new outdoor grill and storage shed out at Champion. Just to replace the one that's there now. Softball tournaments, uh, you know, last year, we were not able to have some of the big events that we would have liked to have had. We had a lot of small round robin weekends and so forth. We are scheduled to host the, um, 16U Northern Nationals at the end of July, July 21st through the 25th. So, um, we are, uh, hopeful that that's able to go on as, um, you would expect. Obviously, we'll do what we can to make sure, if we have to have some guidelines and restrictions there, we will, we'll do that. We're also looking to host the 12U State Tournament, July 8th through 11th. And we do have a lot of ability to, you know, create space out there and follow any guidelines that maybe would be put in place. So we're, we're optimistic we'll be able to host both of those events this year. And that brings me to the end of my budget, so if anybody has any questions.
Any further questions before we move on to the next topic? Not seeing any, Doug, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Uh, next up is Mark Clinch with Facilities Management.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Clinch, I like that.
I, I will go over high level, certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. Really, our budget for this year is, is similar to what we would be asking for in any other given year.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you have a page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, 130, 131.
Thank you.
Really, the objective of our budget is to just maintain an orderly, clean, and, and well-maintained, um, facilities, frankly, through our efforts. We have, um, gone through and really kind of scrutinized areas where we can be effective with our internal services and balancing the impacts of COVID. I, I do wanna say that, uh, me personally, and on behalf of the department, we're extremely grateful for the resources that we have leading up to the COVID pandemic. We found ourselves in a situation, um, that we were reacting to, which was quite simple for us. We basically just quit, quit dusting things and focused more on, on, uh, decontamination and, and, uh, you know, just making sure everything was a little bit more, uh, cared for on that front with the pandemic in reaction to the, you know, the, the social fears and things that kind of came along with that early in the month. So the reason that I say that is, uh, the most remarkable thing about that was that our staff's basic needs were met essentially, so that they didn't have fear in their duties as far as what that was gonna look like. We had trained up for things of that nature, we have the tools that we needed to respond to it. We're able to go into other areas and help other departments. The most remarkable thing that I witnessed in that was how easy that transition was. And I credit that to having what we needed, so that those folks weren't wasting energy on fear. They just were able to get to the job that they knew already how to handle, so I thank you for that. In the specifics of the, the line items, it's essentially status quo to some, to some degree, other than the cuts in the first, in the current year. We, we offered up some, some savings, obviously, to the, the budget this year. And looking out to the other years, we leverage what we, uh, felt was in the best interest of our internal skills to basically keep things, like I mentioned, orderly, clean, and well-maintained. And of course, we're always gonna have to have our, our partners out in the contract world to help us where we can. So, um, most of what, what we are doing is typical. We don't have any major projects that, that are included in this budget. Things we will continue to focus on are life safety, building envelope, energy management, berry removal, things of that nature that align with the other, um, organizational priorities. If there's any questions or you'd like me to go deeper on anything, I'd be happy to do that.
Questions for, uh, Ms. Lorenz, and then Mr. Nord, and then Ms. Smith, they're flying.
Okay, um, what's the status, and maybe Ms. Reese can speak to this, of, um, the facility that, um, is at the, uh, the Ryburn Place 305 Pine Street? Is that still closed? And, you know, do, what, what's, what's going on with that property?
Right, um, yes, I believe it is still closed to the public. I had a conversation with Ms. Ryburn about a week ago. She didn't provide a specific date for reopening. Ordinarily, she's closed in the month of January anyway, so I'll find out what her reopening date is. She and I have talked about it. As one would guess, there's been very limited travel. And she's been in communication with a number of, um, other venues along the Route 66 corridor, and all have indicated that there just was not, uh, there was, there was very limited visitor attendance this year, most of the venues. So, um, I'll talk to her and see if she can provide a date for reopening, and then I'll share that with council.
Okay, so Mr. Clinch, I mean, has that, you know, obviously you haven't had to attend to that building? I mean, while she's been closed, has that been a, a reduction in responsibility at least during that time?
Yeah, we generally don't have a, a whole lot of work generated by that facility.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you, um, Mr. Clinch, um, the, uh, audit work, we had, uh, an audit that was done here earlier this budget year. It came through and they had recommended a few things. It was like, I wanna say it was lights, or just temperature, and there was some work that needed to be done on the HVAC sys, the HVAC system. Is that work included in this budget?
No, because that's done.
Oh, good, good. Are there any other energy improvement projects that you see need to be done?
Well, yes, there's always an opportunity there, um, and they're on a, on a wide, for a wide range in magnitude. Some simple, uh, you know, some serious capital investment to return. So, you know, we take care of everything we can as a matter of ordinary practice. Like, that's baked in to our process. Any energy move that we can make that's to the good, we'll do it. You know, we won't replace an exit sign or something that's not LED. We won't put in a low efficiency motor, things like that. If we have a failure, we just, we just upgrade parts, uh, you know, for the best we can as far as what makes sense for, for a particular application. Yeah, there's all kinds of lighting opportunities and upgrades, and, uh, it's just a matter of getting them drawn here and prioritizing.
Okay, um, well, my position is like, for the easy things that we don't need to hire a consultant to tell us about, you know, like replacing whites with something more, more efficient. If you find those throughout this next budget year, I ask that you please bring those forward because I would rather pay to have those done without hiring a consultant than, uh, you know, hiring somebody to tell us to do some of the easier things. But thank you for your work.
Bernard, I don't, I don't really think that there are any consultants in this budget. I'm, I'm not sure why you brought that up. And generally, if we do bring a consultant in, it's for a very large project, and that has to go before council authorization.
Since you asked, um, since you asked, um, the lights, like in the parking deck, those were things that were fairly obvious when we had the folks here from the, uh, oh, the energy folks, People Action. You know, they had even noted, or they even recognized that those lights could be upgraded. And those are the things that I'm talking about, we should do without hiring, hiring a consultant.
Fair enough, Ms. Smith?
Mr. Clinch, um, I, I believe your department probably was impacted more than others in terms of the need for PPE and, and cleaning supplies. Uh, Ms. Reese might be the better person, or Mr. Hune, to answer this. Did we, were we able to qualify, uh, some of these expenditures for reimbursement?
You're muted, Mrs. Reese.
Sorry, um, yes, I'm going to say that we, we've been tracking all of the PPE and COVID-related expenses for potential FEMA reimbursement and through the Cure Act Fund. So, um, Mr. Hune or Mr. Clinch, their staff is the one that's tracking all this from, with, uh, regular submittals for, toward FEMA. So they might have something specific to offer.
And, well, I don't know what the reimbursement is, I don't see that. But, you know, we tracked everything that would be applicable and, and handed off for, for the required.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I wanted to mention, I'm sorry, Mayor, did I just interrupt you?
You did not.
Okay, um, Mr. Clinch, um, do you want to talk briefly, just for counseling, on the, the status in, in response to Mr. Nord's comments about the, the light fixtures in the parking deck? Just in terms of that process and the consultant's role and, and such? Can you give us the Reader's Digest version?
Well, that's not my specialty. Yeah, uh, specific to, to Mr. Nord's point, I think that we are like-minded in that. We try and leverage every resource that we can. And what we find, and, and not trying to be prideful in this statement, but what we find is that oftentimes, the recommendations that, that we come up with in-house are validated by consultants. And therefore, we, we kinda, it, it ends up being just that. We pay to validate what we already know in some cases. And we try and avoid those situations. We work with our, our local consultants on things that are more geared towards a thing we, we can't or, or really, uh, don't have the expertise necessarily to, to do in-house. So, you know, a return on investment and things like that, the calculation based on what. And, you know, there's a lot of questions out there pertaining to what makes it a good, or what's a good return on investment. So we leverage expertise that goes beyond our walls. But nobody knows our buildings and what we have better than, than our folks do, frankly. You know, we've, we've got a whole laundry list of stuff that, that we know about, that we wanna do. The resources that we have brought in, we see back. Now, that was a no cost to the town. There were two audits done for $7,500, which was reimbursed through the AMR incentive program, which everybody pays into. So basically, what we're doing is extracting our investment back out to get that in a form that shows paybacks, and instead of doing a level three audit, where we're looking at investment trade, which we still think at some point someday may make sense. But to your point, Mr. Nord, not for, not for the low hanging fruit. I mean, we know an incandescent bulb is gonna cost more run, more to run than, you know, an LED. So we leverage those things, anywhere that we can, we can find an opportunity. So, we leverage those things, anywhere that we can, we can find an opportunity to get the calculations and the time spent on the, on the engineering side and the resource to us to validate the paybacks for the projects we've identified, then that's where we invest it and then we roll that money back into actual projects instead of consultants. And I'll give you an example of how that just worked. We had an opportunity, actually a need on the train platform, both sides. There's, I think a hundred fixtures, there's a bunch of fixtures out there. And we took a hard look at if we really needed that many. And the reason we started looking at it is because the ones on, on the north side are obsolete, the finger parts. And the ones on the south side are newer, so we were lining up the spec. We found that the spacing was such that we could maintain safe light levels. And instead of buying any fixtures, we reduced the count on the south side and then, and took those newer fixtures and put them on the north side. So all we paid for was labor on that, so we get the cost savings and supported the local economy through our electrician. We had a, and basically the net win payback, um, it could be months. Those are the kinds of things we're doing. There are bigger things to look at and there will be, so when we start talking about old A-track systems sitting on rooftops that are getting aged, those things are gonna probably need to line up at some point. And no need to be engineering on those things because not only are the systems dated, the controls are dated. And in order to make a move towards the ultimate, you know, the end game, does require certainly counsel direction to me to say, this is the level of investment we're willing to make to get to this level of efficiency which we're telling you to do. So until we get to that point, we're really not investing heavily in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
So, uh, Mayor, that, uh, that summarizes the facilities management, facilities and energy management department, so thank you, Mr. Clinch. The last department that we want to touch on with you and review the budget is Public Works, including the enterprise funds of sewer and stormwater. And, um, Mr. Comfort, Jason Comfort, is going to be filling in for Mr. Aldrich this afternoon, so he's just joined our call and, and you can see him now, um, on your screen, and so I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Comfort.
All right, hi everyone, uh, thank you all for letting me step in here and present the Public Works budget, uh, this evening. Budget starts on page one eighty-four of your budget book. Uh, we'll start with some high level initiatives that we took care of in twenty twenty. As you know, Public Works handles the sanitary sewer master plan. Similar to other departments, we did have a, a pretty big impact due to COVID. Our, our in-house forces only managed to clean and televise about eight miles of sewer this year. Usually we try to handle about thirteen to sixteen miles, uh, so it was a pretty big impact. You'll also see impact, uh, on pavement maintenance, we'll go through those numbers a little bit later. Another major initiative was a pedestrian rail underpass, thirty percent plans are underway, progressing there. And then, um, also handled improvements to Sugar Creek via the Riparian Maintenance Contract. You saw some prescribed burns that we handled in, uh, Anderson Park. We also, uh, took care of a lot of brush removal here in Fairview and we're working out our, our program for this year. Moving into Public Works Administration, not a whole lot going on here. Contractual services, these are some expenses related to Uptown. We also have Cardinal Infrastructure in here. Uh, that's our DC assistance for the underpass project and, and others. They're funded at fifty-one thousand this year and then we have some yard modifications that are coming up. We've been undergoing a, a pretty extensive yard rehab and, and reorganization here. That's twenty thousand this year. And then in other maintenance, uh, we, we usually throw about twenty thousand in every year for general maintenance in Uptown. This includes anything from sidewalk and roadway work to, uh, powder coating, garbage cans or, you know, benches or lights, things like that. That's, that's pretty much the administration portion of this, um, again, pretty light. Moving on to the next one is fleet maintenance, that's on page one eighty-six.
Before we move on, Mr. Comfort, I think Mr. Nord has a question.
Yep.
Thank you, um, you had mentioned that the underpass was thirty percent underway. Could you explain what that means?
Sure, so, um, in the engineering phase, typically plans are broken out into thirty percent, sixty percent, ninety percent, and then a hundred percent. So right now, we are in the thirty percent phase, which is, um, some preliminary engineering, but it's mostly utility and, um, early, early design of the structure itself.
So then, is there a drawing as to what the early design kind of would look like? I mean, I understand it's not gonna have all the detail, but general drawings?
Uh, so generally, we're gonna stick with, uh, what we've seen in a lot of our conceptual. Um, it's gonna be a square box culvert design. Um, they just got started here in beginning of January, so they're not too far along yet. But yeah, once we start getting some submittals, we'll be happy to share those.
Do you have an estimate as to how much staff time, like related to like dollar amount, has been spent or will be spent next year with this project?
I, I don't have that off, uh, top of my head right now, no.
What about last year? Do you have any idea there?
Um, I would say in general, it was only a few hours a week. We were going back and forth with the railroad quite a bit, trying to get approvals. But yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't too much last year.
Okay, but there are expenses in your budget for the underpass this upcoming year?
Not really in Public Works, it's more in the capital improvement project.
No, Mr. Nord, I think we covered this on Tuesday, the, the underpass funding is found in capital. It's still continuation of phase one design, it's based on a contract that council approved a few years ago. I, um, if you're wanting to know staff time, we, we haven't tracked staff time by project necessarily. Maybe that's something we should continue doing, but you know, staff, if that, staff spends their time on lots of projects, lots of programs and such, so. We haven't really articulated how many hours a week we're spending on various things.
Sure, because, uh, you had mentioned that fifty-one thousand dollars was for Cardinal, which is for the underpass. So I would assume that that's an underpass expense.
Cardinal?
Or is it Cardinal that you had mentioned?
Cardinal is the lobbyist, that's a separate contract, I, I, I think that's what we're talking about. Cardinal Infrastructure, they do, they're, they are a lobbying firm and they provide assistance on various transportation related projects.
Right now, my understanding is the underpass has not been approved to go forward for construction. So at some point, we should know how much we're spending every year taking this forward without a direct approval for this to go forward, because if we vote no, then all this money is just out the window. And that is something that I think we need to do now, may not be the time, but that needs to happen soon.
Okay.
Thank you, and make sure I get my hand down. Too bad about that. Just to refocus this, uh, a little bit and, and clear up any confusion. So, the engineering work that's getting done right now was already approved and authorized by the council vote. Is that correct, an accurate statement, Ms. Reese? Right, so the money's being spent and the time being spent was already authorized by council vote. So just to be clear that what's going on right now is already authorized, there's no additional authorization that needed because we already took a vote on that. Sure, Ms. Reese can provide the, if any council members need reminded of those votes and, and those timeframes. Certainly, and then obviously, as we move forward with any new actions, those actions will be brought to us at appropriate time for council consideration and conversation and vote at that time, but, uh, just want to clear that up, there seems to be confusion about the dollars being spent today, uh, that somehow that, that are part of, of something that hasn't already been considered or voted on because they already have, just as a reminder. Thank you.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thanks, and thank you, Mr. McCarthy, took the words right out of my mouth, so I won't reiterate that. But I guess I do have a point of clarification question for, um, Mr. Comfort. So were you saying the Cardinal under, is, is, is in the contractual services in your admin budget? Is that the fifty-one thousand, is that part of the seventy-two eight that's there? That's somewhere else?
Yep.
That's okay, and then the remaining balance of that is roughly some, just some other miscellaneous services, it's largely Uptown?
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, continue.
Okay, um, moving on then to page one eighty-six, this is fleet. Again, not a whole lot of changes here. Uh, some things to note, uh, we do maintain over three hundred pieces of equipment townwide. We also manage all the fuel, uh, townwide, that's about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and thirty thousand a year. When looking at twenty twenty compared to twenty nineteen, our fuel usage was down nine percent and our fuel cost was down twenty-eight percent. So we had pretty significant savings there, again, due to COVID, um, shutting a lot of things down around town. Moving into the budget highlights here, and really no major changes, uh, pretty status quo year to year. We budget about two thousand a year for international incumbents engine software subscriptions to be able to read and diagnose issues within those, uh, programs. And then, uh, looking at a wheel balancer in year five, um, again, really no major changes here in, in fleet maintenance. Are there any questions?
I'll start with a question and then, Mr. McCarthy, uh, the damage done to our police cars this summer, that was wholly covered by insurance, is that correct? Mr. McCarthy?
Must be channeling, I had two questions, one was about police cars. Thank you for answering that one. The second one is, uh, the large difference in fuel costs. I'm assuming we didn't just get a bunch of new fuel efficient equipment, that, that has mostly to do with, uh, either lower use or, uh, the fact that gas prices were a lot cheaper this year.
Yep, yeah, both, both of those played a big factor. Uh, I, I think the biggest factor was definitely the less usage of equipment overall across all departments definitely contributed pretty heavily.
So we should not anticipate this trend to continue?
If things can go back to normal this year, yeah, I would not consider, you know.
Okay, yeah, I was making that assumption, but I figured I'd better ask.
Yes.
We will continue to hope for a mild winter, that does help though, even with fuel costs, so.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yep.
Continue, Mr. Comfort.
All right, uh, moving on then, next to streets, uh, this is on page one eighty-eight. So, he, here in streets, uh, this year, we're looking to, to hopefully utilize some local motor fuel tax funds to, um, both increase, uh, the amount of pavement repairs we can do and also try to increase some part-time staff, uh, to help operate some equipment and help with that as well. So, a, as I mentioned in the beginning, overall, our pavement repairs were down compared to twenty nineteen pretty considerably. Uh, asphalt repairs were down twenty percent and concrete repairs were down thirty-one percent. Uh, this year, we're definitely looking to, to ramp back up to, to regular status. Looking at, um, account twenty ninety, this is our traffic signals and street light power costs. We budget and spend about six hundred thousand a year, just in the power costs for those. A, a good item to note here is in our, um, snow removal supplies, salt and calcium chloride. Uh, usually we spend about three hundred and eighty to three hundred and ninety thousand a year. Now, due to mild winters these last two years, uh, we have plenty of surplus heading into, you know, this next fiscal year. Uh, we're actually not gonna need to buy salt, so we're gonna have a pretty significant savings there. Uh, so far this year, we've only had five snow events that have required salt. Uh, we've only used about a thousand tons typically, we order four thousand tons a year. So we'll have a nice, healthy surplus heading into the next year. And then, this group typically is the ones that help with, uh, uptown event management setup. Obviously, this year was lacking a lot of that, um, but our guys also helped place the concrete bollards to enable the outdoor dining. So that was big for this year. Moving into the budget, contractual services, uh, this is where we include funding for our contract maintenance, for our, uh, signal maintenance and, and things like that. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand in there this year for, uh, contract maintenance. This is where we usually, uh, perform our crack seal, crack and joint seal projects out of. Um, we, we have a little bit of an increase this year due to the motor fuel tax increase, so we're gonna try to incorporate another, uh, project, whether it be crack seal or a patching project, um, something like that. In conjunction with the engineering department, we're gonna be taking on, um, pedestrian safety improvements at College Avenue in Kingsley. Um, that's about thirty thousand and then we'll hopefully be able to, uh, get a contract out for, um, bike and pedestrian pavement markings. Uh, looking to spend somewhere around twenty thousand for, uh, some help with that. Travel and training, out of streets, we try to send three employees to IPSI every year. That's supervisory training, um, at the Illinois Public Service Institute. They didn't have their courses this past year, obviously, uh, so we're hoping they ramp that up again and start getting our guys trained. Maintenance supplies, this is a thirty-five thirty, this is where we pay for, uh, all of our street signs, our paint, any other general supplies that we need. We fund this at about a hundred and eighty thousand a year. Other supplies and material, uh, this is where we're gonna see our concrete and asphalt price or, um, material costs. Uh, I think we added about forty thousand there due to local, uh, motor fuel tax, so we're hoping to really utilize that for even more pavement repairs this summer. And then, equipment over ten thousand, uh, again, uh, more local motor fuel tax help. We're gonna be, uh, looking to purchase a melting pot and trailer for, uh, crack sealing. Uh, right now, we use a, a cold flow system that doesn't really last as long as a hot applied rubberized coating. So we're looking to upgrade to that, uh, that's in year one and then year two, we're looking to spend about ninety thousand on a road widener for just that, road widening and, uh, some shoulder, shoulder work. Um, that's year two at ninety thousand. Any questions there?
Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, um, so, uh, I kinda brought this up, um, after a meeting. Because for a while, I was unaware that the town was responsible. Um, I was once told early off in my tenure, um, that the town was not responsible for the streets in, um, in the Savannah Green subdivision off of Shellborn. Um, it was brought to my attention most recently in a council meeting that we are responsible for that. And, so now having further clarification at this time, um, I did bring it up before that we need to seriously consider, um, getting it fixed. I know personally where I am and located, there is a, um, a crack, I won't even say a crack, it's basically a divot so deep, um, there, it, it puddles really bad when it rains and like when the snow melts, the water kinda goes down into it and it, once again, leaves huge puddles. Um, so I'm very familiar with that and so since, like I said, since it was recently brought to my attention that it is, um, a part of the town, I would highly suggest, um, I know that there's going to be some utilization of the locomotive fuel tax to look at, um, some additional streets and I'm hoping that, um, there's a serious look at the, the streets within Savannah Green because they are in desperate need of them.
Yeah, we are, we are definitely aware of the issues in Savannah Green. So, so currently, the, the way Public Works operates on their repairs up there is generally by our own observations but also, um, resident concerns or, or input. Last year, while we were down overall, concrete repairs, it was actually a pretty decent year for Savannah Green. Uh, we did over twenty patches up there, which is a little bit more than usual. Moving forward, in conjunction with the engineering department, uh, we're gonna be utilizing their pavement rating system. And with that, we're gonna take a pretty in-depth look at Savannah Green, we're gonna be able to better prioritize whether a project is something that can be handled in-house with Public Works or whether it's gonna be something that is in-house with Public Works or whether it's going to be something that is more along the lines of a larger capital improvement project. The issue that we're seeing, you know, here in-house is our crews can only do so much. We are planning on, you know, spending more time with the extra dollars on, on patching. But some streets are so, so far deteriorated that any, any work that we do is really only a Band-Aid. And we'd really like to have the availability for a more, you know, larger scale capital improvement project, whether that's an overlay or whether, you know, it's a full tear out and replace. So that's going to be in the works with the engineering department this year and hopefully we'll be able to spend more time up there.
Ms. Smith?
I was going to ask for the status on the conversion from kind of a subjective analysis of which streets needed repairs before others to that rating system. Is that conversion expected to be complete by the end of this year?
I believe so, I'll have to double check with Ryan Otto and the engineering department though.
The end of the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes.
To clarify, okay, thank you.
Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you. Ms. Cummings, I'm really glad you brought up Savannah Green because I have, I have fielded a lot of calls and personally I've seen the, the really you know, obviously poor condition that those roads and the, the access alleys are in. So I'm just out of curiosity, you know, how did, how did it get so bad so quickly? Was that poor workmanship on the part of the developer? Or is there something like fundamentally flawed with how it went in in the first place? We do to avoid that in the future.
That's exactly what's happening, it's a poor construction practices, we're seeing the result of that. I mean, subdivision and roads like this should not be failing after fifteen, twenty years. What we're finding when we, when we dig up and do some patches is that majority of this pavement was poured directly on organic material. And so what happens with organic materials is it gets soft and mushy and can no longer support the concrete above it. And then when cracks form, then we get settlement. I've never seen it on the extent like we're seeing it in Savannah Green. The other thing we're finding is, again, the construction practices. We're seeing a mismatch in pavement thicknesses throughout, you know, the entire subdivision. We're seeing some areas that have eight inch depth, we're seeing some areas in the alleys that might have three inch depth. Again, we're correcting those as we find them, but they're so far spread out. It is definitely a construction issue from back when this was, you know, first put in.
Right, and just to be, just to be clear, because it was installed quite some time ago and council might not be aware of this, but it was developer constructed it, not the town, not the town's contractor. So developer constructed and dedicated it over to the town.
Mr. Nord?
I was going to talk about the dedication. In the annexation and dedication paperwork for Normal, do they include some sort of mandatory warranty or anything for us to take over the maintenance?
I believe so, and that probably would be a great question for Mr. Day, but I'm, I'm not sure it goes on for twenty, you know, fifteen, twenty years, I don't know what the timeline is typically for a warranty.
Okay, yeah, because that should be something to look at, I mean fifteen, twenty years is quite a long time, but if we're saying that it shouldn't fail, then we need to upgrade our paperwork before we do dedicate any other streets or at least have some sort of inspection process, you know, like the state does inspect periodically if we know we're going to be taking it over at some point. Another question or comment really about the municipal street signs, you said there's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I know that probably includes other things as well. But some time ago, since my tenure, there was a local vendor that had quoted on some municipal street signs and they had come in at like forty percent less than where we were getting them from before. I know this past year, there was a comparison that your department had done, but they excluded that vendor. So I would ask maybe this upcoming year, include them, see if, see if we can save some dollars to put towards fixing some other roads, so thank you.
Hey, go ahead, Mr. Comfort.
Yeah, sorry, I believe we did reach out to that vendor and they chose not to submit a price.
Correct. And
Well, then maybe offline, we could talk to them, I want to make sure we're talking about the same vendor, but I don't want to do it
That would be fine.
Like online.
Sure, that would be fine, we won't identify the vendor, but the, the vendor that you and I had many exchanges on over a year ago, they, they weren't the lowest price, we had, we had quotations from them. So somehow
They were not included in the quote that you shared with the council. The company name is not there, I talked with the company here recently and they had no idea, so I just, I just, I just want to make the connection and make sure that we're all talking about the same, the same folks.
That's fine, you can, we'll follow up with you specifically afterwards, but this goes back to, you know, the town's procurement policies and, and we have been following, we are following them and we have a, we have a good vendor right now, but if, if we can get, meet our procurement policies, get a better price and get good service and good quality, certainly it makes sense to switch if needed.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks, yeah, I just, you know, a little bit of reiteration and level set on the procurement policy. You know, obviously there's a potential for conflict of interest if any one of us get in as an intermediary for a local business when we're talking about time contracts. So I just, once again, we had this discussion at that point in time when this was brought up, but once again, I'm just going to make the same plea I did at that point is that if any one of us are contacted by a vendor, please stay out of the middle of it and direct them to town staff directly. Don't be having conversations with this because you put the body at risk and the process at risk. And so please, let's all try to follow those rules. And also, just as a point of public, if anybody that's watching this, right? So our procurement policy puts things out for bid and vendors are sometimes proactively, depending on the situation, contacted, sometimes not. But everybody's invited to bid in a blind bid, so nobody has strategic advantage or competitive advantage to know and be able to undercut somebody by a few bucks. So it's a fair and open and transparent policy to give everybody an equal shot at the business. And so when we open bids and, and award somebody, it's easy for the bidding to get criticized by those who didn't bid, come say, well, I could have done it less. Generally, we don't entertain those after bid opening comments or requests simply because it isn't fair to everybody who did the blind bid. And so just to level set for anybody who's watching, we do blind bids to make sure it's fair for everybody who wants the bid. Thanks.
And I said it's a retort, Mr. Nord, go ahead.
My recollection, this was not a, this was not bid out, it was just competitive quotes forgot, were obtained. So that's my recollection as to what happened, so, you know, we can look at the document and see, but I don't want people thinking that this is someone that has remorse or after the fact type of complaint.
And Mr. McCarthy, one more time and then we'll move on here.
Certainly, yes, certainly, you know, my comments were not specifically for you, Mr. Nord or any particular bidder, but certainly there's can be confusion in the marketplace about how we do what we do. And so, A, I was wanting to make sure that, that everybody who's watching understands typically our bidding process and that sometimes we proactively reach out and sometimes we don't, like I mentioned. And so just to make sure that we're all talking about our fair and open and transparent policy in the same way. That, that, that's widely advertised to everybody out there, thank you.
And Mr. Comfort, move on to waste removal.
All right, so waste removal, page one ninety. Overall, last year, both recycling and solid waste were up, recycling was up about three and a half percent. Solid waste, garbage was up three percent. Cost of landfill, we are actually out to bid right now currently with jointly with Bloomington. We open those bids tomorrow, that'll be for another seven-year contract, which we'll be bringing to you guys for approval here on the fifteenth. When it comes to recycling, we're still seeing the similar trend that we've been seeing in years past where we're still paying for recycling. Cost fluctuates, you know, pretty heavily month to month when we look at the price in December of twenty twenty, we were paying thirty-five eighty-five a ton. Compare that with the price in December twenty nineteen, which was fifty-eight sixty-three throughout the year, it's quite a big fluctuation. We budget every year based on sixty-five dollars a ton. Which so far we haven't really, you know, had to worry about. Overall, a surprising metric from twenty twenty was that bulk waste was down. It was about eight and a half percent. At the beginning of the year, we saw a pretty high influx of bulky waste, mainly due to, you know, people staying home. I think it really tailed off throughout the year and I think the lack of a big ISU move in and move out played a pretty big factor in that. Brush pickup, however, was much higher than twenty nineteen, about thirty-two percent higher. That's no surprise, again, with everybody being home, they're able to get everything done around the yard. So yeah, that was, that was a pretty high number this year. Some budget highlights, contractual services, this is where, you know, the bulk of our, our public works budget is. Landfill cost, we budgeted about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand for this year, that's a three percent increase yearly. Bulky waste is at two hundred and twenty-six thousand this year, again, three percent increase yearly. And Midwest Fiber, this is our single stream recycling. We, we budgeted that at a hundred and twenty-five thousand a year, three percent annually after that. And then we handle our electronics recycling out of this budget as well, we budget fifteen thousand a year for that. That's pretty fixed, doesn't fluctuate too much. Some special waste disposals, account twenty-one twenty. This is where we fund our household hazardous waste at twenty-five thousand every year. The program is every other year, so coming up this fall, there is supposed to be another household hazardous waste event. We don't yet have a date for that, but when we do, we'll, we'll be sure to tell everybody. Out of this account, we also pay ISU for the landscape waste, we haul all of our landscape waste up to their farm in Lexington. This includes all of our leaf pickup in the fall and anything we pick up seasonally during summer. Special program, this is where we fund the Ecology Action Center for the contract with the landfill at forty-two thousand this year. Equipment under ten thousand, nothing major out of here. We're looking at getting six new two-yard containers for thirty-seven hundred and then one twenty-yard roll-off in year two for sixty-five hundred. And then equipment over ten thousand, this is where we fund our garbage and recycling carts as well as our yellow lids. We typically try to buy five hundred to a thousand yellow lids every year. This is looking to be our last year for the yellow lids, we think we're going to have enough of a surplus here in-house to be able to address any other lids that come up here in the future. We're going to buy five hundred of those for the final order at ninety-five hundred. And then this year, we are planning about four hundred and twenty-seven carts, garbage carts, recycling or landscape waste carts at thirty-three thousand for that. So that's it for waste, do we have any questions there?
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I've noticed that the recycling pickup, the regular garbage pickup, and I think even the, the bulk waste are all handled by a sole driver and, and the equipment. And, and the only service that appears to require multiple individuals is the leaf pickup. How does that efficiency compare to other cities doing this same garbage service?
I think it's more efficient. Overall, we're only, the only, yeah, the only time we have more than one is obviously in the fall during these leaf pickups. Otherwise, we're only one person per truck, that includes the garbage side loaders plus the claw trucks that you see for brush and bulk. So I mean, we're, we're pretty efficient in terms of that.
Do you get part-time people to help with the leaf pickup then? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you really can't get much more efficient than one person in one vehicle.
Not unless we automate the vehicle.
Robots.
Automated, yeah.
Mr. Nor?
Thank you. For the ISU landscape waste program. It was just recently in the paper that Bloomington's taking theirs somewhere locally here. We're hauling this all the way up to Lexington, so I assume that that means that you know, we have to pay the fuel to take it up there, the driver time, you know, there and back in these big trucks, you're talking these big trucks that I'm used to dealing with are seven miles to the gallon, so there's a lot of expense going that far. I'd like you to kind of investigate, maybe compare some costs, see if we can find a way to do this locally and save taxpayers all that, well, and the environment for you know, taking these big trucks back and forth so much.
I could be wrong, Mr. Nord, I, I don't know, I haven't explored how Bloomington selected their site, but I believe it is a private farm. And when you say local, it is west of town, so it's somewhere possibly in McLean County, I'm not, I'm not sure where, but
I could tell you exactly where it is. But, because this was all in the paper here recently, but you know, there's lots of local places and west, west, west of town is still closer than Lexington, so I'm just asking to investigate other options.
Oh, okay, I, I understand that, I was just trying to make a point that we have a very good relationship with ISU and their farm uses this as part of the, the university's agriculture program, but I also, Bloomington.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Nord.
I was going to say that it all comes back to what it costs the taxpayers.
Right.
If ISU wants it, then maybe they could lower the cost, so it makes it more advantageous for us to drive and use all and put out all that carbon, taking it up there for them.
Okay, I also will then have to explore what Bloomington pays as well, because it's, it's not free. They, they actually pay a farmer, so we'd have to decide how we would want to go about and find a farmer. And, and, you know, I guess council can talk about that kind of service and what we want to do with it, or staff can evaluate future disposal opportunities and seek farmers who would want it in exchange for ISU's program or something, so we'll, we'll need some direction on that, because right now we, we don't plan to seek alternatives for it. But if, if the majority of council wants us, wants us to do that, we'll do that.
Or I just don't think we can make an educated decision unless we investigate this, but you know, there's lots of stuff you bring to the council, yeah, there's lots of stuff you bring to the council without getting council approval first, so that's just an idea, and you know, you might also talk with the water director, because there's lime too that the town has to get rid of, so you know, if you can somehow incorporate this, because that will offset some of the acidity that you get whenever you put the leaves out, but that's all way more technical than the council level, that's
Okay.
You know.
The, I will say, we do contract with a vendor to remove lime and the, the vendor finds the farms to put them on, that is not the town's strategy, we, we just contract with a vendor, I think it's probably a different approach in terms of just taking a dump truck and dumping our landscape ways versus applying lime, but I, again, I don't know, so we can certainly explore that. But we'd have to put some sort of intrinsic value on, on, you know, the partnership with ISU and how they're using the materials for their farm, I think there's some value to that as well.
Sure, sure, and I'm also speaking from a point of, you know, education and experience, you know, we used to take the landscape waste from Bloomington and Normal for, for a time being, so this isn't something that I'm kind of throwing out there that's, that doesn't have a basis for it. But another question on there, you've, you've got equipment under ten thousand dollars, you're buying some containers, some roll-off containers. Are these, what type of containers are these, are these open boxes or these closed recycle bins, what are they?
No, they're, they're open top boxes, this is what we No, they're they're open top boxes. This is what we this is what we put our leaf pickup in the fall in. And we use those to haul up to the ISU farms.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Not to start a discussion here, but I I will say I am completely happy with our partnership with Illinois State University Farms and don't see any need to change that.
Ms. Lorenz? You're on mute.
All right, let me look. I was gonna say the same about about this discussion about Lexington versus west of Bloomington. And not to put Mr. Comfort on the spot, but, you know. I'm just not sure what the magnitude of difference would be. You know, of course, it's always good to look at other options. But, you know, Lexington from Normal is not that far. I mean, Mr. Nord, you and I, based on where we live, we can get to Lexington faster than we can get to some places in Bloomington. So while it sounds like it's farther away because it's a different zip code, it might not be that far. So that's a point I just want to make there. And I don't want to get too far into splitting hairs on, you know, west of Bloomington versus, you know, somewhere else in McLean County. But I guess let me pivot to another area, and that is, this is probably more for Ms. Reese. Where do we stand on the. Midwest fiber intergovernmental agreement and and has the one-third basically been budgeted? In is that reflected in this budget?
Well, the expense would show the full amount because we have the contract with Midwest Fiber. On the revenue side, the final budget will include in revenue a reimbursement from the city and the county. The status of the intergovernmental agreement is taking a little bit longer than I had hoped. That tends to be the case with a lot of things these days, but the city of Bloomington has indicated that they will take their. They intend to get on their agenda, I think, for their last their second meeting in February, which would be toward the end of the month. And it is now February first, so not too much longer. The county is going to put it on their land use committee agenda. So I think that that means that it goes to the full board in about five weeks.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, not allowed to add clearly, Ms. Lorenz and I were thinking along the same lines. I think our our partnership is very good with ISU and certainly. Ms. Reese, you know, investigating competitive bids is always a good idea, of course. But without any evidence that this is really saving us much money, you know, please don't commit a full-scale. High cost of time on on this kind of thing if we don't have any evidence, you know, on the on the forefront that that this is actually saving any money. So maybe a conversation with our friends in Bloomington would be enough for us to to know. But I know the ISU, as a result of some of it, does give away. Some landscape products to community members as well. So there is a there's a community benefit for the using the ISU landscape recycling options as well. So just as a level set, there's some community good as well to that.
Mr. North?
Thank you. I'm confused about the Dropbox funding in the memo that you sent us, the summary memo. It says that fifty thousand dollars was for the Dropbox recycling program, but you said that. Did I hear you right? That you said the full hundred and fifty is budgeted in the actual budget we're voting on?
You know, I'm gonna I'm gonna ask Mr. He or Mr. Hune to jump in if he's on the call. I thought we were reflecting the full amount of our contract with Midwest Fiber. And I think since council just adopted that in December, that would be reflected in your final budget document. But, Mr. Hune, can you correct me or or clarify?
I need to take a few months to check that. I believe we would have put the entire budget in for the whole amount, but let me do a couple of checks and get back to you.
Okay, so we'll let you know in just a couple of minutes, but I that's I think because it went to council very late in our budget process. This dollar amount maybe shows. Our past agreement with Midwest Fiber, our final budget will show the full expense. We want to budget for the full amount in the appropriate line. And then we would show the revenue from the our two partners. But we'll double check and Mr. Hune will drop me a quick note.
I guess I can give my comment now because really it's going to be the same regardless of what the answer is. When that came before us, it was presented that if the other two municipalities did not sign on, we were going to back out of this. But now it's being the full amount is being budgeted. And in the past, we have been or I've been told, the council has been told that if we vote on something and the money's in the budget. That it's in the budget and we approved it, so I don't I don't agree with having that full dollar amount in there. If, well, since since we voted and said that if they don't sign on, you know, we may back out of it.
Your point's taken, Mr. Nord, but you're splitting hairs here. The agreement states that if the the parties do not choose to choose to fund it, we will. A man or a discontinue that agreement with Midwest Fiber and make a budget adjustment.
It doesn't say we will, it says we may.
Excuse me, please don't interrupt me. We are assuming that this is going to pass. We're told that it's going to pass. If some event it doesn't, the end result's going to be the same, Mr. Nord. It won't be in the budget. So you're the procedural to me is splitting hairs. And, Mr. Comfort, well, let's move on to sewer operating.
Sounds good. This is starts on page two ninety-one. We'll start with sanitary. So again, going back, this is our department that handles the sanitary sewer master plan implementation. So again, this year, our our staff only managed to get eight miles cleaned and televised sewers. That's down fifty-six percent again due to COVID. We are looking to get back up to our normal numbers of, you know, thirteen to sixteen thousand feet. Or or miles, I mean, this year. On the contract side, we had a pretty good year, both televising and lining. This year lining, we lined about eighty-five hundred feet, which is up a hundred and sixty-six percent from twenty nineteen. I'll talk more about what we're planning in the capital side this year. It's more. In in terms of televising, we televised again pretty consistently through contractor about a hundred thousand feet. So that's great. We we're finding, you know, plenty of 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 areas where we need to address. Whether we're doing point repairs, lining, things like that, so it's been extremely valuable here doing these projects. So from the budget highlights on the admin side, contractual services, really no new items to note there. The only thing I mentioned is this, this is the account that handles our contracts for our lift station monitoring. Our 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 lift station pump maintenance contracts as well as our order control, bioxide contracts. Similar to streets, we try to send one employee and travel and training to the IPSI program, looking to get that started again this year. No new items under equipment under ten thousand. And equipment maintenance is is one of our big line items here. This is where we pay for our chemical odor control out of about a hundred and eighteen thousand a year for the material. Which is bioxide. We have it at a few of our lift stations. This increases three percent every year. Bioxide really helps knock down the hydrogen sulfide, which is it contributes to the, you know, typical odor smell sewer. And then H two S is also highly corrosive. So we'll we'll we're looking at doing some pump station repairs here in the future. It's a direct result of the corrosive nature of H two S, so it's incredibly important this bioxide chemical treatment. We just recently, last year, installed it up at North Bridge to help ease some of the issues that we're seeing at Ironwood. Because North Bridge pumps into Ironwood. So again, that's at a hundred and eighteen thousand this year, up three percent annually. Moving in to sewer capital unless there's any questions on the operation side of sanitary sewer.
Oh, right ahead.
So capital this year, this is on page two ninety-five. We did go over this in the CIP, but we'll go into more detail here. In account sixty-six twelve, this is our utility improvements. Really what we try to do in this account is extend sewer to areas in town that have septic. County health department's not not approving any new septic systems, so we try to give these residents an option to connect to a sewer. So in in year two, we're looking at doing the extension of college cottage to garden. This project's already been designed. This is just the construction cost of two hundred and seventy-two thousand in year two. Another one that's been identified recently is Adelaide, Morgan and Osage. There's a small area of septic that we're going to try to extend sewer to. We're going to look to design that in year three and construction in year four for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then we always add twenty thousand a year in this budget for any miscellaneous emergency repairs that may pop up during the year. Going down to account sixty-six thirty-five, this is I and I inflow and infiltration. The the big item to note here is in year three, we are going to take a pretty comprehensive look at the Ironwood subdivision in its entirety. As you're all probably aware, we see pretty high flow numbers during rain events at our lift station up there. It it's amazing. The numbers that that we see really inundates our system when it rains. So we're planning a pretty big project there, four hundred thousand in year three, to try to really get a grasp on where it's all coming from. And and then prioritize, plan to address it in future out years. Sewer linings sixty-six forty-five, this is really the, you know, the meat of the the capital budget out of sewer. Last year, we did eighty-five hundred feet. This upcoming year, we're planning sixteen thousand feet of sewer lining. We're budgeting eight hundred and forty thousand for that this year. That's an eighty-eight percent increase. We're taking budget savings from previous years and really ramping up that project this year, so we're looking forward to that. Sixty-six fifty, this is manhole rehab. We don't have anything planned for this year or year two. But we are looking to get that regularly scheduled, years three, four and five. Every year during our assessments project, we also have the contractor inspect all of our manholes. And so we're we have a rolling list, so there's plenty to go around. So we'll look to restart that program in year three. Another large item coming up is pump station repairs. This is account sixty-six fifty-five. So we're going to start the Ironwood lift station. We're going to do the design work this year with our consultant and then look to do construction next year. We've increased the budget due to the amount of damage again from H two S. The wet well is heavily corroded and the concrete's deteriorating pretty rapidly. All of our steel and metal components that are inside are all corroding pretty heavily. So that we're looking to do that next year at three hundred and fifty thousand. After that, we'll move to Airport Road, do something similar. We need, you know, similar improvements out there. We'll try to keep this, you know, funded and and address other lift stations in in future out years. And then sixty-six sixty, this is our clean and televising contract or sewer assessments. You're all very familiar with that. This is projected to be our final year of doing that. We're budgeting eight hundred and twenty-two thousand. Anything after that, our in-house crews should be able to handle. And and collect. Again, this project has been very valuable in being able to identify future years sewer lining projects. A lot of this upcoming years' projects were found on twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen's projects. So again, very, very valuable information there. Any questions on the sewer capital before I move on to replacement fund?
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. You're extending a couple trunks, it sounds like. Whenever you extend those, the money to pay for that, how are you planning on recouping it? Are there going to be fees for those that hook into it or just the taxpayers throughout the town pay for it? What's the funding mechanism?
Once we extend into those areas and the houses tap in, they will start paying a monthly sewer fee at that point. Right now, areas that are on septic don't pay into the sanitary sewer fund. Once they tap on, they will.
What happens if they're in a property that's not on the tap-on map?
Then they will not pay. They'll still, if they tap on, they'll still pay a monthly sewer fee. But there is no tap-on fee like you see for other developments.
So who makes the decision then for the rest of the taxpayers in the community to install? Or to extend sewer out if the folks that are going to use it don't have to pay to tap into it?
Well, that's that's something we decide in-house. It's it's more of a. It's part of our overall sanitary plan is to help address all these areas that don't have sewer. It's also part of an I I E P A program to try to address septic areas as well. I mean, it's they're really, the county's really not allowing any septic systems to go in. So if these homeowners don't have an option, they're they're in a tough spot.
Right, so if so, we're talking specifically about the homes that are currently on septic, which is very limited number. It would be, Mr. Comfort, do you know the quantity right now of homes that were parcels that we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 about two dozen parcels across the town right now.
Right, in residential.
Residential, yeah.
So then we could certainly talk with council about the cost of that investment. Obviously, council would be authorizing that if we were contracting it out. And we can talk about how council might want to. I guess. Get cost recovery if that's of interest, but when you apply it. Sanitary sewer installation to a few properties at a time. I'm not sure if that is is even something that an individual property owner could could handle, but certainly we could talk about it.
Sure. I mean, I think it's important for the council to know because I think you rattled off that they were somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars apiece. And that's a big chunk of money and we need to know what the need is, you know, is it is their service failing? Is this for new development? Because you're we also have the lift stations. Whenever you put a lift station in, well, there's there 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 is lift station repair. We just talked about that for Ironwood. So for the lift station, whenever you decide to put in a lift station, how do you factor recovering the cost for that?
We don't always factor cost recovery, but as council knows, because we've shared some maps with you recently in in the sanitary super tap-on discussion. Generally, in a sewer tap-on area, it covers quite a bit of property, number of acres. So if we're talking about a few hundred thousand dollars for a sewer extension to. To benefit a handful of residential properties that are currently on septic. That need to get off a septic system eventually because they won't be allowed to replace their septic system and the EPA doesn't permit it. They have to get onto a town system somehow. We'd have to decide if the if their only solution is to pay for the the. Sanitary sewer extension or not, because I I would suspect a lot of private property owners wouldn't be able to absorb that investment.
Sure, I completely agree, but Ironwood, the entire subdivision of Ironwood is not on that sewer tap-on map. Therefore, according to the logic, that whole development happened. We spent however many however much money extending sewer and then putting this lift station there. And they did not pay for for actually connecting to it.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they didn't pay.
Huge extent.
I'm not sure if they didn't pay for connecting to it. I mean, Ironwood subdivision is probably a few hundred homes. And my guess is when the development agreement was into effect, we annexed Ironwood. There must have been some sort of public benefit to have the Ironwood subdivision become part of the town of Normal. And I would believe we can, you know, I certainly would believe that council at the time knowingly entered into the annexation. And I would believe, we can, you know, I certainly would believe that council at the time knowingly entered into the annexation agreement with the developer and chose to handle it the way they did. So now to go back and say something from the nineteen eighties should have had some fees attached to it. You know, I, I, I would suspect that it was done with for good reason back in the nineteen eighties, so.
Yes, and I'm not trying to rehash something that happened in the past. We are extending new sewer. I think now is the time for the council to look and see what it's going to serve. And do those folks contribute to installing this? And do they need it? Because we have to answer to the taxpayers who are going to pay for all this money to run it out there. So that's why I'm asking now and just showing that in the past, we've hooked into entire, we've given, you know, entire subdivisions the ability to connect, and now the rest of the taxpayers in the community are paying the cost for all the maintenance.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thanks. I'm just hoping we can bring this back to the actual topic of conversation, the current budget and, and get off past history discussions and just for a level set, sewers are paid by people who pay for the use of the sewers. Certainly tap-on fees are cost recovery. We've covered this a number of times and we're rehashing it today about past and other zones. I think Mr. Comfort's adequately answered the question. I'm hoping we can get back on budget topic. Thanks.
So just to clarify, just as we have a handful of residents that have, still have lead pipes, we have, you said about two dozen residents on septic tanks that might have been fine when they were on isolated parcels of land. But as the town developed around them and the town built up, sanitary sewers were put in and these individuals may have opted not to, to avoid the expense of a monthly sewer bill. But those septic tanks have a useful life that is probably nearing its end. And EPA and other environmental regulations will not permit them to continue with a septic system and ultimately they will need to come into the Normals sewer system. And as an individual homeowner at a price of three hundred thousand approximately, it would be cost prohibitive for that single homeowner to, to bear that cost. And, and so we're, we will be faced as a council at some point with decisions about how to accommodate those taxpayers and those homeowners, but that's not anything that's in the budget currently. Is that succinct?
Correct.
Okey-doke, I'm ready to move on.
So looking into page two ninety-nine, this is sewer replacement fund. Equipment over ten thousand. This year, we're looking to get a new backup slash reserve pump for the Northbridge lift station. Common practice here internally is we like to have spare pumps ready to go. Frequently have pump issues at Northbridge, Ironwood, and Airport Road. Right now, Northbridge is the only lift station that doesn't have a backup pump, so we're looking to get one of those. That's twenty thousand. In year two, this is another large expense related to the Ironwood lift station while we're in there. And we have the wet well drained, doing the maintenance there. Right now, all four pumps do need to be, should be replaced. We're going to do that all at the same time. That's a replacement cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand. That will be, again, coincide with the lift station repairs that we have planned in year two. And then year four, we're looking at upgrading the Northbridge Lift Station bypass pump. It's, it's nearing its, its ended life service. And so that pump will be about fifty thousand to upgrade that. Account seventy-twenty, this is trucks. Just looking to replace a pickup truck this year. And then in year four, we're hoping to replace our sewer televising truck. Our current truck has a ton of miles. It's, it's in disrepair for the most part. We're looking to upgrade to a little better unit, something with a separate box and onboard generator. That's at a cost of two hundred and forty-five thousand in year four. Also in year four, we like to split the cost of a vector with the storm sewer, so we, we pay half out of each fund. Half the cost of a vector is two hundred and ten thousand. We will evaluate that cost next year and see if we can push that back, whether it's really needed in year four or not. That's currently the plan. And then in year two, in conjunction with the I T, I N T department, we're looking to upgrade all of our computer equipment throughout the sewer division. That's budgeted at seventy-five thousand. Any questions on sewer replacement fund?
Sheen, now you want to keep moving?
And so finally, the, next is on page three oh seven, which is the Stormwater Management Plan and Budget. This program's federally mandated. It's funded through the stormwater fees, as we all know. And it also funds portions of capital projects such as road and bridges through the engineering department. Out of this fund, we pay for things such as algae treatment at the, at various detention basins. We also fund the engineering department's sump pump discharge program. This year, it's funded at four hundred thousand. Some budget highlights out of the admin side of this, not a whole lot. We are planning on doing a stormwater master plan similar to that of the sanitary sewer master plan. It'll be much less than what we have in place for sanitary. That's at seventy-five thousand this year. And then we'll also be looking to hire a contractor or consultant to help us with manual practice updates. That's at thirty-one thousand. Moving into capital program. Account forty-six thirty-four, this is Public Works Salt Storage, Salt Storage Shed. Currently, we have the new, the new salt fabric structure going up right now. That's nearly complete. In year two, we have budgeted along with Facilities Department, one hundred and seventy-five thousand to rehab the roof of our existing shed. We pushed that out a little bit. We had trouble finding reasonable pricing this year for it. Account fifty-five twenty-seven, drainage improvements. In this account, we're funding some of our Public Works drainage improvements here in our yard. This is again, I E P A mandated. Public Works Department here is surrounded by two creeks. So we're trying to do a better job of limiting our, our salt runoff into the creeks. This budgeted this year, we're going to look to relocate the landscape waste and mulch pickup location. We're going to move it closer to Warner Street. Better access for residents to come and drop off or pick up mulch. Regional Detention Projects fifty-five eighty-eight, this year we are going to take on the Eagles Landing Detention Basin. Looking to use our contractor Cardinal for this. We have that budgeted at three hundred and fifteen thousand. It's going to be a pretty comprehensive rehab over there. Storm sewer improvements. We have forty-five thousand budgeted this year to try to address sidewalk settlement at our culverts. You know, our culverts bridges always seem to settle over time. We're going to try to address that one way or another. Drainage ditch improvements, this is count sixty-six twenty. There's a few different items in here that are split between Public Works and Engineering. Lincoln to Shellborne Maintenance Project, this is an engineering project at two hundred and fifty thousand. Timber Ridge Constitution Trail Ditchwork. This is an area of town that floods every year. We're looking to read, address this at eighty thousand this year. Culvert Entrance Treatment at Hidden Creek. Right now, Hidden Creek is an open ditch that drains into a sewer. So we're looking to get some culvert entrance treatment there, a screen of some sort for forty thousand. And then Engineering Department and Parks and Rec will be installing a low-flow culvert in Maxwell Park to help get them over to their new disc golf area. Creek Maintenance, this is where we fund Cardinal Infrastructure out of every year. We fund about a hundred thousand. We spend anywhere from eighty to a hundred on general creek maintenance throughout town. We are looking to get our program this year up and running. Met with them yesterday to outline certain areas. Also included in here is some ditch work at Ironwood in years one and two. Fifty thousand for year one and thirty-five thousand for year two. And then sixty-six sixty, this is assessments. So this is going to be similar to that which we see in sanitary sewer project, cleaning and televising. We're going to do the same thing. Right now, we lump that project in with our sanitary sewer project. We fund that at fifty thousand a year. We are going to continue that project, you know, further into the out years as part of the stormwater master plan. And then we're also going to take a pretty comprehensive look at West College Avenue, Rivian to White Oak in preparation for that upcoming project there. Any questions on storm sewer?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, could you go into a little explanation of the sump pump discharge program? What that is, how much you've done, and how much you still see needs to be done in that area?
So this, this project is primarily handled by the engineering department. But really what is, what it entails is giving people the option to hook up their sump pumps into a storm sewer system. I know this past year they did quite a bit up in Ironwood in that area. I, I really don't know how much is left or, or what's on the docket for this year. I'll have to get with Ryan Otto and the engineering team and, and see what's planned.
Well, I, I know in my neighborhood, houses on one side of the street that have the sidewalk, you'll see the sump pump hose coming out of the foundations and that section of the sidewalk tends to, to stay wet and can be problematic when the, the temperature drops. So how, how is the repair made and how is the cost factored in as to who bears what cost?
I, I believe the town just bears the cost. These, these sewers are put in, in the easement out in front of these homes and then they're, they're connected altogether. Houses are then allowed to tap into this system and then the system ultimately dumps into regular storm sewers. I believe the homeowners are in charge of, of hooking up to the system, but the actual sump pump discharge, you know, program is funded by the town.
Okay, so, right, I'm sorry, I'm just going to jump in real quick. We had a, we worked with a contractor who performed the service, so I'll go back and find the actual date there that we brought this to council. But it is a type of program that will be going on for years. It's to help individual property homeowners, residences get their sump pump discharges out of the streets, out of the sidewalks, and sometimes even out of the sanitary sewer system diverted into the stormwater system. So there's certainly a value to us to have their stormwater going into the right location and not getting over sidewalks and streets to, to perform, which eventually become ice issues and traffic flow and pedestrian issues.
So if a homeowner has a sump pump that currently is draining directly into the yard and going across the sidewalk, is the correct party to contact the Public Works Department?
Right now, it's the Engineering Department.
Engineering, okay, thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. For the maintenance of Sugar Creek, I just wanted you to, well, I got a question. So on Sugar Creek from College Avenue to Blair, that was just redone. What's going to be the maintenance plan for that going forward?
So I believe in that contract, there was extended period of maintenance that was required out of the contractor. So what we'll see, I, I believe, is a lot of weed control, making sure that the native plants are thriving. You may see prescribed burns. I'm not really sure. I'll have to check with engineering on what their plan was. Yeah, it'll be mainly weed control, sprayouts, and prioritizing the native plants.
If I, I'm sorry, Mr. Nord, if I could jump in and say, we are just drafting some materials, some educational materials to send out to all the property owners along that creek area to let them know what the plans are. This first year, it's basically a time to let the materials start to grow, to, to have their impact for stormwater cleanliness and to do their work. And then at moving forward, I think the plan from Parks and Rec is to mow about once a year, and we're explaining to property owners why that is and what the plan is. At this point, the mark, the informational materials are intended to be distributed around a month from now, so about the first of March, so people know what the plans are for letting the materials, letting the, the plants start to grow and do their work, and then what happens after that.
Okay, well, that was kind of where I was going, was wanting to make sure that it was going to be mowed or not mowed because residents along there and further upstream from there, from Blair to, I guess, Rab, or not Rab, but Fort Jesse, where that's, where that stops. There's been several neighbors that have complained about the overgrowth, the trees, the brush, the backing up of the water, mosquitoes, you know, all kinds of problems. So I do hope that we start mowing these. Are there any creeks in town that the maintenance procedure is, we're going to mow less than once a year?
I, I don't really know. I'll, I'll find out for sure. We should have asked that earlier when we had Parks and Rec on, on the call. Mr. Katalinski would have been able to address that.
Sure, well, we don't, we don't, we don't have to bring him back, just that's going to be something that I'm going to advocate for if it doesn't get mowed because residents have reached out several times.
Yeah, part of, part of what we're trying to do is certainly we want to be managing the stormwater and the stormwater areas using best practices. And so part of that is not everyone's going to like what that means, but we're trying to educate people on why we're taking the strategies we are and partnering with Ecology Action Center and just letting people know and then working with them to try to make sure we're all on the same page.
Sure, and I just ask that it be consistent throughout the town because when you get, oh, what would that be west of, maybe Broadway, maybe? Then the creek is mowed, maintained, you know, all the way even, even past the town yards, you know, until it extends into Wilmington. So consistency is really.
It is. Some of that area that you referenced is actually Binward's property, and they have different strategies and standards, but we'll work with them too to see if we can all get on the same page.
Ms. Lorenz? You're on mute.
Actually, I think Mr. Nord covered my questions because I was concerned about some of the other remaining areas of Sugar Creek. So, yeah, just keep us apprised of that. I know, I know some of the, you know, the one stretch looks, looks much nicer, but you looked the other direction and it was still really all overgrown. So what I hear you saying is that educational materials going out and, and attention will be given to that. So that's good. I guess just to Mr. Comfort, you've done a great job here tonight. Pinch hitting, I guess, for, for Mr. Aldridge. And as an Ironwood resident, I had no idea we were such problem children when it came to the sewer and department, so I am going to be too sheepishly quiet now. Be quiet. Go flush my.
You can, you can share that with Mr. Preston.
Right, it's his fault.
Yeah, it all starts up at the west end. Mr. Nord?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to hit it, raise my hand.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Comfort.
Thank you.
Includes our department heads. Pretty good work by staff. We'll go to general discussion here in a moment, but again, good work by staff. As a reward to staff for doing such a great job on budget, we're going to reward you with starting this process all over again in a couple of months.
Mayor, I don't know if Ms. Lorenz has a question that I'm, I don't want to jump in on one of the council members, so.
She's got to take her hand off.
Okay. Okay, just a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. So we, we looked up real quickly some answers to your questions. Ms. Smith, you had asked about how the SOAR payment feed is determined. We took a quick look and it's actually calculated Bloomington since they administer the program, Bloomington Parks and Rec, in their budget, they prepare every year the expense estimates. Then they, then they prepare their revenue assumptions, less any donations they intend to receive. And that net amount of that difference between revenues and expenses is split sixty forty. And the town is billed and invoiced for the, the forty percent share. So it's a great program and we appreciate Bloomington coordinating that. The other thing mentioned during Parks and Rec or asked about Ms. Lorenz was the cost recovery data for before and after school. Took us a few minutes to, to pull that out, didn't have it at our fingertips, but we did have it calculated. For this current fiscal year, it's a little bit out of the ordinary because of school and e-learning and being in session then out of session and such. So this year is an anomaly. We're hoping only, we anticipate only about a fifty percent cost recovery for this year. Last year we were a little bit short. We were about ninety four percent cost recovery. Otherwise, historically, we're looking anywhere around a hundred and ten to a hundred and fourteen percent cost recovery in our proposed budget, the one you're talking about today for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two and beyond. It's, we're maintaining our usual, excuse me, usual assumptions of about a hundred fifteen percent cost recovery for before and after school. And that isn't the case in all of our parks and recreation activities. Most of our, well, not most, I'm gonna say many of our parks and recreation programming is subsidized. The biggest one that comes to mind is aquatics. We've talked about that before. So on the, on the occasions where we can cover our costs, like before and after school, we will continue to make that our target. So that's something that I just wanted to share in terms of follow up from our earlier conversations. Let me look at my list. I've noted other things I need to follow up on as we move forward in preparation for the final budget document. But those are the few things that come to mind in terms of outstanding questions from earlier this evening. The other thing I just wanna mention before council's discussion is I just want to again reiterate staff, my appreciation for staff to put this budget together. It's been a very unusual year for fiscal year twenty twenty one. So moving forward into twenty one, twenty two, we are going back to more typical program and activity assumptions in Parks and Rec and cultural arts and the like. So you've heard a lot in the last ten and a half, eleven and a half hours or so, you know, from last Tuesday to tonight regarding the budget, the proposed budget. Our goal is to incorporate your thoughts, your questions and concerns into the final budget document and present that final budget document to you on March first for approval. And I've got a lot of, we've got a lot of staff members on the call if council has any questions. But in the meantime, I will just get my pen handy and make notes as you all talk through your thoughts.
Oh, general discussions, including items on current budget. Mr. Nord?
So we've given you a bunch of input. Will we see this budget document? Like how many days before we actually vote on it? And is there an opportunity for us to negotiate any further than what we've done so, so far?
Well, the, the final budget document will be provided to you a few days prior to your March first agenda. When you get that March first council packet, we do provide you with written information in terms of what's changed between proposed and final. So you have that information. But you're not, I don't know if you need the document further than, further in advance than that. So council will have to give me some, some feedback on that. But that's been our typical practice.
Is there an opportunity for us to give more input once we see what you've come back with us with?
Well, you can always share your thoughts and comments with me. But in terms of the, the town's budget and whether or not the, the numbers are gonna be moving around much beyond what we, you know, after we finish the conversation today, I guess I would ask council to share with me directly if you have a preference on something that should be changed or reconsidered. And then I would follow up with all of you to see how you feel about that so we can, we can nail down our numbers and, and get this budget finalized.
Okay, well, I'll give you my input. Throughout the whole meeting, I've shared with different departments, different things. So, you know, if you could go back to those notes. Because there's, well, it's like a fifteen hours worth of conversation we've had. And I don't trust that any of us can rely on our memory. But generally, overall, you know, I would like to see more of the money pushed towards infrastructure and taken away from things that are not absolutely necessary. That would be my kind of nutshell. And how you do it, I'll leave that up to you.
Okay, and I appreciate that. And I think that's something I'll ask the mayor if this is a conversation best happening now or if you wanna have it later. But I think from my perspective, if we could, if I could have some sort of clear definition of what's necessary. I've heard, I've heard, and you speak in the past, Mr. Nord, in terms of kind of wants versus needs. I just need council to make, make a definition so I know what that is in terms of, you know, how, how you want those, those funds allocated and what that, what specifically does that mean? So I'll, I'll need some clear definition.
I'll actually wait then and listen to some of my more tenured council folks as to how they would define it and kind of where they're at and answer if necessary.
Well, also too, I think it's gonna be helpful, again, if you communicate with Ms. Reese and your fellow council members, if you choose to, exactly, you know, what, what programs you want to bolster and which programs you want to cut to make that happen so we have a balanced budget. Ms. Smith?
And last year, we, before COVID, we had an opportunity to have a retreat where the council had identified priorities that helped guide our, our discussion of where expenditures were made and, and, and staff energies devoted to. We haven't been able to do that. So, but one of the points that was made is that actions and direction to the staff had to be, the, the consensus is of at least four of the council in order to, to drive an agenda item. And absent that kind of retreat, will we have an opportunity to, to meet as a council in a work session to work on the policy issues that underlie the budget decision? Or with COVID is, and budget considerations, are, are we not incorporating that into the process this year?
From a policy standpoint, this year, we're not gonna have the ability to do that. It just, the timing is not gonna allow us to, to meet in that regard to do that. I will say historically, you know, the first four or five budgets in my time on council, there was never any strategic planning. A good move on our part to, to implement that and talk about it. Again, you know, we've had eleven and a half, twelve hours to talk about this process and staff has, has noted the concerns going forward in the budget. So I think they do have some feedback from us in terms of what's important and what's not. But given the fact that it just doesn't seem likely we're gonna be able to have any kind of retreat process pre-COVID or in this COVID world, that it's gonna be important to communicate some of your wishes to, to Ms. Reese. And she can compile that information and get it back. And the sooner the better. Again, we don't have a lot of time to do this.
Well, and on that note, I think what is helpful is on page forty three of the, the budget, it shows the sources of revenue by percentages in a nice colorful pie chart. And on page seventy nine, it has the expenditures in a colorful pie chart that have kind of driven these underlying projections from the various departments. And a large part is salary and wages. But I understand the, the town has made some changes in staffing. Can, can you have some specific comments on, on how much staffing has changed?
Uh, yes, sure. Ms. Smith, I'm gonna take a quick look. I believe we, I mentioned, I believe I mentioned it in the, what we call the transmittal letter, which is the city manager's letter to council introducing the budget at the beginning of the budget. We have, we have incorporated some significant staffing changes for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two that certainly are, are difficult for those employees that, whose positions were eliminated. But it does allow us to present to you a balanced budget. Most of our, our staffing changes, all of our staffing changes, were part of the whole package of wanting to make sure the budget is balanced in all years, that we meet our fiscal targets. And that also took into consideration the change of how the property tax levy was allocated for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. So in the proposed budget, we are moving forward with public safety positions that are currently vacant, still being vacant. We are also incorporating some restructuring of the city clerk's office to take advantage of technology and refocus kind of tasks in that regard. And we also cut some positions by, through attrition. And we have eliminated some positions just by moving forward and changing our operations. So some five people did get notification of their positions being eliminated. And so that is never easy. It's very difficult these, in these times to, to put someone in that position. But this, I think, is a strategy that we've done before. And unfortunately, because of COVID and because we wanna make sure that we are financially sound moving forward, we've, we've incorporated those staffing changes.
How much was the total dollar savings from the reduction in force salaries and benefits?
Mr. Hune, he got off the call. Oh, there he is, okay, he's back on the call. Mr. Hune, do you, can you share those figures?
I haven't got it, my, my, I think it's right around a million two was the overall savings or some of the adjustments in terms of the vacancy savings that we're experiencing and the cuts that Mrs. Reese mentioned. It was about a little over a million dollars in, in budget savings. Now that, that grows in the out years, of course, as you compound the impacts of COVID and merit on those, on those businesses in all of our places.
So, so there's been over a million dollars in, in staffing cuts already included in this budget. The, the debt service is only six percent of the budget. And for, for individuals concerned about the amount of debt that normal carries and the fact that their interest payments, I just wanna clarify that large projects are financed by bonds. Bonds pay interest until maturity, at which time the principal is paid. So the, the, the debt service is going down. The bonds are intended to be interest only until maturity because that's what the investors are seeking. They're not an installment payment. And the, the road projects have been increased, the, the funding for that has been increased in large part because of the passage of the four cent gas tax increase, which brought in an additional million dollars. So looking at, at the, the, the budget that's been prepared, it's, it's my opinion that the staff has, has done their job of looking at what they need to do to run their departments and with the resources made available to them. And absent a retreat where we can come to some consents about policy issues, I, I don't know that I would have any individual recommendations to, to make major modifications because the fact that, that this does balance, I think, is, is very commendable given the challenges. And that's all I've got to say.
Um, Ms. Cummings?
Mayor, I, I guess I'm gonna kind of add on to where Ms. Smith was going. I feel that, well, number one, it was also stated in the very beginning of this process that staff did take a look at what our direction was from our last retreat to kind of give some insight as to where to go for this year. So it's not like they're throwing darts in the dark. We have given some level of preference to things that we wanted to see. And because we even, we didn't have that retreat this year, they have just used it as a continuum. So I don't want people to assume that, that our staff is out here throwing darts in the dark without leadership. Aside from that, I think a budget was presented that was well thought out by all department heads, working to ensure what our vision was, was being met. The reality is though, though we individually may have some things we want to see, there takes a quorum, if you will, of us in order to, to make those changes. It is, it sounds good to shout if you single-handedly have power, but that's not the reality here. We have to collectively agree with the majority on the direction of where the town is going to go and what the budget will look like in the end. And so I think, you know, bar having some, some things taken under consideration here and there, I think overall, I think we've been, we've provided good direction even through this process, as well as provided feedback that can give them some security on how to close out this process. And I don't feel as if our, our staff isn't capable of fine tuning the budget utilizing the information that has been provided.
Ms. Lorenz?
So I'm doing some math over here and, and maybe you can help me out. I don't know that I have all my figures. But basically, just give me a thumbs up, Ms. Reese, if I've got my numbers right. We're looking at roughly a seventy million dollar budget, right?
For the general fund?
And then a hundred million dollars overall.
Well, it should be more than that. Let me take a quick look at my notes, near my glasses.
The, I'm just, but I'm gonna try to get.
Hundred and thirty eight million overall.
Okay, and that's the seventy million from general fund and your enterprise.
Right, water, sewer, stormwater, capital, roadway, MFT, a library, I'm, I'm sure I, oh, vehicle and equipment replacement, bond, debt service and project reserve, so yeah, hundred and thirty eight million overall.
Thirty eight million, okay. So our, our top five? Um, and I'm not gonna include the enterprise funds, I'm not gonna include um, capital, but just operating budget-wise, our top five um, budgets or departments are police, in this order, police, fire, public works and parks and rec seem to be right in there at like seven and eight million apiece, and INT.
Correct, that sounds accurate.
Okay, so though, so just kind of, you know, think of Pareto's principle here, you know, the eighty-twenty. What are your top, in this case, five out of what, fifteen departments or so? That are, that need, you know, they're taking the lion's share of the dollars. I think that's a pretty good list of core services. First responders, public safety, guardians of civilization, I, the public works. Uh, you know, INT is right up there with security these days, right? Um, and you know, arguably, I guess parks and rec maybe is the one that falls into um, you know, some debate about want versus need, but I'm not sure that there's a lot of residents in our community that would not want parks and recreation and, and things of that sort. Now, what makes our community different is that we bear the, the cost of that as a department, as opposed to a separate taxing body. There's lots of other communities, especially up north, that, you know, there's a parks and rec district. And so this wouldn't even be hit in our budget, it would be something else. So, so those are, you know, when you kind of think about, you know, um, less on the, you know, let's not spend on wants. We're spending, uh, that's almost probably fifty percent of our operating budget right there on those five departments. Um, so that's a pretty good, I mean, I, to me, that's a good sanity check right there. Um, you know, so I think we're going in the right direction. Um, now, you know, when you start to get into the um, sewer and water, I mean, water is another twelve million dollars of dollars going into it. And sewer, I didn't catch what that is, but I'm gonna hazard to guess it may be along the same, the same uh, total as well. So um, that may be a little less. But at any rate, so infrastructure, Mr. North said, you know, let's spend more on infrastructure. Okay, well, what's infrastructure? That's like a big topic, right? You know, um, is it sewer? Is it water? Is it roads? Is it sidewalks? Is it first responders? You know, is it, is it law enforcement? Is it fire safety? Is it, you know, what's infrastructure? I would think that where we're spending the majority of our money, those top five, police, fire, public works, INT, pub, and parks and rec, plus water and sewer, make a pretty good comprehensive list for infrastructure. And that's where we are spending a majority of our taxpayers' dollars. The rest is where we split hairs and get, and get, you know, all our, spend like eighty percent of our time almost talking about those other items that are arguably more discretionary. Um, and so we can have that conversation. I frankly am okay with the general direction um, for this year, but I'll tell you where I'm concerned. Um, is in the out years. I am concerned about can we continue to, to afford the things that we've been affording? Um, like the one point five million dollars, and I know it's a twenty-year commitment, so we might not have any choice in the matter, but the one point, point five million dollars on mental health investment. I'm glad to hear that they're gonna come speak to us. I've had conversations with members of our county board. They were very gracious to reach out to me after I, I asked about it. Um, but we need, we need those annual updates. We need to be sure that they, we are getting sufficient ROI on that, uh, you know, in terms of return on our investment. The other area, and I mentioned it the last time, is the one uptown building. We've got to look at developing that first floor, building it out, getting it, getting it productive. Um, and in the same, you know, I, I see it as one project where we, where we talk with that developer, we get it producing. And at the same time, perhaps we restructure, do something that is more amenable on the second floor um, rent. The next area going in the out years, I hate to say it, but it's, it's gonna have to be staffing. I hate to say it. But that's, you know, when, when you look across all of the departments, you know, if you just do a cut across of what really matters in every given department, you know, your biggest chunks of money is not in advertising, it's not in, you know, subscriptions and publications. It's not in training and travel. It's in salaries, benefits, pensions, and then to a lesser extent contractual services. So, I mean, those are the, those are to me the four areas that in every department you gotta look at. I mean, we will spend hundreds of hours if we start to look at all of the tiny rocks. We gotta just look at the big rocks. And those, those are the areas that we've gotta look at, staffing and benefits, I am, you know, the health benefits. Um, and, and then the, you know, the pensions. And, you know, I asked the question last week, you know, can we afford to have in-house inspections? Can we afford to have in-house engineering? And everybody said, oh, but it's, it's the best, it's the best. I know it's the best, but maybe we can't afford it anymore, because it's just getting too expensive to, to maintain the health benefits and maintain the, the pensions. And so these are the areas that I think, not for discussion today, but for years three, four, and five is where I'm worried. I think the budget for, for this year is decent. I think the budget even for next year looks to be, you know, again, probably about the same. But it's in about year three, four, and five that makes me really, really concerned. And so these are the areas that I think, you know, we've got to really scrutinize and maybe think provocatively and innovatively and like we've never done before. And maybe things that have seemed sacred, we just need to kind of set that aside for a minute and really have honest discussions. Um, so, you know, from that, I guess I'll, I'll just land with one more thing, and that is um, on a very specific thing. Are we, or are we not spending more money on roads this year than last year? And if not, why?
I believe, if that's a question to me right now, I believe the answer is yes. Um, while I, while I address the, the other things, I guess I'll punt to Mr. Hune to confirm, because obviously Mr. Otto's not able to join us this evening. But um, couple of things, appreciate all of council's comments so far. Um, Ms. Lorenz commented about the mental health initiative, just so everyone's aware. Um, we are planning on the county presenting to you on March first, which would be your council meeting, coincidentally, it's the same night you adopt the budget. But um, to give you an update on the behavioral health coordinating council and the mental health initiative. Um, in terms of the other issues, um, as you know, we will continue to move forward as council prioritizes the, the um, the concerns and the strategies and, and the things you want me to focus on this year and next. In terms of one uptown on the circle and the like, I do want to point out that in terms of the budget we've presented to you, I'm very, I'm very proud of that budget. I think we've found solutions for all five years. So as a reminder, from twenty-seventeen through to today, we have cut, you know, thirty positions. Thirty full-time positions have been eliminated from the budget in the last few years. That's a lot for an organization that's pretty lean to begin with. So when we talk about um, cutting more positions, if that's necessary in the future, it, it will be um, with services and with departments and the like. And, and if council wants to have that conversation sooner rather than later, we'd have to identify the problem we're trying to solve, because we've presented you, to you at this point, a budget that's solid all five years. Um, you know, obviously, we presented to you the debt restructure plan, but we also showed you that based on that plan, the general fund reserves that are built back up pretty quickly. And we're able to pay off eight-plus million dollars in debt in about fourteen months. So I think that's all really good part of the story. So um, before we start talking, you know, in a public conversation about cutting staff or cutting departments, I would want to define the problem we're trying to solve. And then, of course, in that conversation, we would discuss um, you know, what, what departments? You cut a department, then you also cut a revenue stream. Um, so, you know, the inspections has come up a couple of times now, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Lorenz. Um, that department has um, done remarkably well for us this year in terms of revenue. Um, so, you know, there, there's a lot that goes into looking at um, departments and their services and costs. It also includes revenue. But we can, we can be prepared for that in-depth conversation. And certainly, we will um, do that and be prepared for that when council has a strategic planning session in the not-too-distant future. Um, but, you know, without um, kind of um, blowing horns and, and getting staff or anyone concerned that we're gonna come out next week and cut more positions, that is not the strategy. And um, there's a lot of things to talk about before we start um, talking about eliminating specific departments.
Absolutely, and I, I do want to underscore that my concern and the issues that I pointed out, you know, as bullet points under that, is really for the out years. But I, I believe that, that we have to begin to at least turn those rocks over to make sure that we're going down the right course, because of the reason, to your question, what problem are we solving? I see just this growing weight of um, salaries and benefits that are hard-earned, but nonetheless, can we just not afford it anymore? So that's really, that's really where I'm coming from. So, thank you.
Okay, with that, and again, that, that's every, and I certainly don't want to de- debate or even sound like I'm debating, because you're offering input, and I appreciate that. But um, you know, that's part of every organization is salary and benefits, that's your primary cost all the time. So with that would be services and, and um, but just, and, and you know that this Ms. Lorenz says, as do other council members, we look at each department's budget and their staffing model every single year, every year. Um, it, we wouldn't have been in a position to be able to um, adapt to COVID so quickly um, and adapt to our budget uh, challenges and revenue challenges from COVID this year so quickly if we weren't able to assess our staffing model. And so um, I certainly appreciate council's concerns. And, and I know that you understand that as an organization, our leadership team is, is evaluating their department always for opportunities to be more efficient and such.
And, and I'll make a comment again, uh, COVID has interrupted some of our strategic planning process and that. Uh, we also have an, an election in April, and you know, there are four seats up for reelection. It could be a dumb, but a different council. And uh, since we're talking about out years, you know, if we can get together in the fall, uh, like we normally have, we got off schedule um, a year or two ago, get together in the fall, we can have some of these discussions. I, I will say I'm not as concerned about the out years. Uh, I'm always concerned about going forward and what it looks like. Um, I guess I have to say that, again, reinforcing what Ms. Reese has presented, they have presented a balanced five-year budget. Um, and to say that um, we have trouble in the out years is a little just, you know, dystopian in the sense that we're assuming things are just only gonna get worse. We have to, we have to be concerned with that, there's no question that things can change. But I, I, it just sounds a little dystopian to me to say that this is the path that, that is handed to us, and so we need to deal with it now. Um, Ms. Smith. And I'm gonna ask council members to be succinct here, because we're coming and we have a meeting that starts in one minute, which obviously is not gonna start in one minute, so please be succinct.
Well, I was just gonna say that when you're faced with budget challenges, you really have three paths. Raise revenues, lower costs, or do a combination of the two. Um, to, to be doom and gloom or dystopian about the future assumes that, that we are on a path that is not correctable, and, and I don't believe that's the case. Um, is, the Chicago Tribune had an article talking about the counties that have growth in recent years, and McLean is one of them, one of six in the entire state that is experiencing some growth. And if we expand our taxpayer base, then, then we have uh, a staff in place that can provide additional services. And I will push back on challenging funding mental health care, because um, as, as someone who, who has family members that, that deal with that, I can tell you that um, for too long, mental health has been treated as a second-class citizen when it comes to rece- receiving treatment and care. Um, and that if, if mental health services provide it appropriately, it can prevent other costly things like dealing with homelessness, since a number of people who are homeless often have underlying mental health issues. And so I think that is, is, is a, a consideration that needs to be a factored in when we look at challenging the wisdom of that allotment and that investment in, in a service that provides quality of care. And as for outsourcing some programs, when you introduce, when the town, if the town were to entertain outsourcing some of the services that is now in-house, we would introduce a profit motive that would add a layer of cost to the consumer. So while it may make our budget look better, it may not be in the ultimate best interest of our taxpayers to support private uh, services when the town is capable of providing that and giving the oversight to making sure there's some consistency. And I've met my time, I'm assuming.
I wasn't timing you. Uh, Mr. Nord.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of quick things. Um, what I would like to see is more spent specifically on the roads, those types of infrastructure items, the roads, water, sewer, things like that. Um, and for our roads, we're spending two percent of that budget towards the roads. So I'd like that to increase. And not just blanketly just throw it towards the roads, because we could just throw more money at College Avenue. You know, that's already a whole lot of money, more money per square foot than what we spend on other roads whenever we're doing upgrades. So, you know, the projects actually matter as well. Um, water, for example, we're extending water out to Rivian, five million dollars in this budget, or four point seven. And that is something that they have not requested. When this came up before, you said there was no request for it, there was no complaint for water. So this is something that I deem as it's not necessary, because there's no documented complaint. And, you know, we've got water in town where folks are getting the rusty pipe um, rust in their water. And those are things that I think we need to address, you know. So it's also shifting from one project to the next, and the underpass, you may have it listed under as an infrastructure project, but I, it is infrastructure, but I think that should be a lower priority, been taken care of our failing roads and other things that we absolutely have to do. So when I say infrastructure and spend more there, it absolutely matters which project too. And then um, another piece, we've over-budgeted in this. We're taking eight million dollars, don't forget this, eight million dollars out of the general fund and putting in, putting it into some other fund just to hold there for a few years. So when we say this is budgeted, I mean, there's eight million dollars, and we've said that we're gonna use it in a few years to pay it off. Well, you know, we've got people that are drinking this brown water today that we should be fixing. And also on page two sixty-one, where it lays out the bonds, it doesn't identify that we're actually gonna spend the money to pay down those bonds in the out years. So, you know, either that's an oversight, or, you know, my fear is we're saying we're gonna do this, but we're not actually planning to do it. And if we have the money, spend it now, because we are not a business. We all have to get that mentality out of our mind. We do not create money, we do not make money, we don't earn money. We take it, we set a budget as to what we're gonna do, and we tax our citizens for it. So it's not like we have to worry about how we're going to create revenue. You know, what new product are we gonna sell? We simply just vote, and magically, the money comes in, so we have to change that mindset. And anyway, those are, that's my input, and the rest is, you know, from the past many hours of our meeting, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're really tight on time.
I need to say something here because I'm not going to let this stand. Your groundwater allegations are completely out of line. You show us bottles of brown water that were taken, and then the person that you took those from, an hour or half a day later, say the water's fine. Of course, the water was brown. Four houses, four houses, and we've identified a capital project to fix those problems. And so this weekend, the pipes were flushed, the hydrants were flushed. When the hybrid in front of my house gets flushed, my water is brown for about two hours if I'm running it. So this is, you are trying to create a problem that doesn't exist. We have identified four houses that need remediation. We have a plan for remediation. We have a short-term plan that's fixed it. The people that own those houses call us and tell us it's fixed. We've got a capital plan this summer to fix it. Quit stirring the pot, please. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. First, high-level backup. Just thank you again. This is amazing. We've spent 12 hours. Ms. Reese, you, Ms. Reese, and all the department heads are put in countless hours beyond our 12 here so we can have intelligent, informed decisions about the town finances. And I really appreciate all of that. Just a level set, the town of Normal is the services agency. That's what we exist for. We provide services. That being said, this budget strikes a really great balance between providing the largest portion of the budget for services, because that's what we do, but still providing for a significant amount of money for capital and infrastructure projects. And Ms. Smith's point, we've made some significant cuts to staff and other spots on the cost-cutting sides with this budget. To Mr. Nord's point, we've set a significant amount of money aside to retire debt, not in a couple of years, not three to five years, in 14 months, just over one year. This is a very responsible budget, looking at both costs and future investments. As a small business owner, I gotta tell you, listen to this conversation, I'd be worried. But as a small business guy, I'm more hopeful about our future. We know what's going on at Rivian, Phoenix Investors, several other projects going on. I'm not going to comment on budget strategies three to five years from now, tonight. We don't know what challenges we're going to be facing three to five years from now. Heck, a year ago, when we went through this process, we had no idea we'd be doing pandemic COVID-19-related issues. I think as we approach those times, we'll know what those challenges are more closely, and we'll be able to do that. We don't know, we know the state's actively looking at pension-funding date conversations. We don't know what's going to be going on there in three to five years. We don't know what our continued economic growth, how that will positively impact revenues. We all know, we all know, each and every one of us know that there are active conversations with new businesses interested in locating near Rivian. We've heard that multiple times. We know that there's more economic opportunities coming. We don't know what they are. We don't know what will happen. But tonight, to start talking about strategies for what we do to fix the challenges we don't know we have, I think is premature. I do hope that we can get back to our strategic planning. I think that's very valuable. I think we have solid, from what we did the last time to Ms. Cummings' point, we're not throwing darts on maps. We have a good plan. We continue to work what we have. But if we can't do it in person, I hope we investigate ways to be able to do that virtually. So we do have opportunities to have discussions that we all want to have in a productive format, not at the end of a 12-hour budget process. With all that said, I, too, like the direction of this budget. I think it strikes a good balance. I'm happy with it, and I support it as is. Thank you.
So I think we're gonna wrap up here in just a moment. Ms. Reese, I'll let you close out here. But again, the sooner you can get recommendations to Ms. Reese for her to respond to, the better so that staff has some time to react to that. And as, I think we agree, we're not going down in the line items and say, don't buy that truck or do this, but to give direction in terms of what you think needs to be tweaked. Mr. Preston, you have a comment?
I do, Mayor. Along those lines, I would just ask staff to, if they could, please resend out the ending result of our last strategic planning session that was at whatever point in 2019, as well as the sentiments that came out of that citizen summit the day prior, just as a refresher for us, if staff wouldn't mind, since that is in response to yours and others' comments, that is something that's been utilized with this budget.
Sure, sure. I've made a note of that. And I know that, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Preston, if you had other things you wanted to say.
All set. Thanks.
Okay, so there are a few comments that I would like to make, Mayor, but I know times are tight in terms of our schedules. So I'll just defer my comments until we get to the concerns portion of your council meeting. But I think there were a number of things that came up here, kind of the last 10 minutes, that I need to address in terms of just comments and assumptions, and before we just let those things just float out for citizens. So I'd like an opportunity to speak during concerns during your council meeting.
Would you rather do it now, Ms. Reese? I'm fine with that.
Well, just, sure, I can absolutely, I'll try to be fast. Just primarily in terms of Mr. Nord's comments, I just have one question. Mr. Nord, you referenced 2% in regard to spending, so can you tell me what that is so I know what to look for? You said roads, more, you want more spent specifically on roads, water, and sewer, and then you said 2%. What is that?
Oh, in the budget on page 209, it says 2.9 million is going to be spent on the roads. And I believe that divided by the total budget, the 138 is where the 2% came from. Is that right? I can do the math real quick.
I'll take a look, too. That sounds to me like that would be one specific department or division rather than entire spend. Road spends come from a lot of different line items, so.
Well, when I'm talking road, I'm talking like fixing, not like snowplow and things like that, but repairing, repairing potholes.
True, true. Okay.
Pavement asphalt.
At least I know where you're coming from. Turns out 2.9 million, that is something I can certainly dig into. The other point is, and this would be a question back to Mr. Nord, but he can get back to me at some other time. Your comment was, you want more spent specifically on roads, water, and sewer. So my question would be, then where, can you give me direction on where you want less spent, then? So we know where you want the cuts to occur. So I'd be asking for that. The other clarification is you referenced 4.7 million on a water service to Rivian. And again, I want to clarify, we've had this conversation a number of times. This isn't water service to Rivian Automotive Plant. This is water service down West College and Rivian Motorway to serve economic development. So, you know, so the takeaway for folks is not that we're sending or installing a water main to serve Rivian. This is a water main to go down West College Avenue, potentially. You know, we're budgeting for it. I'm not saying it's going to happen. We haven't designed nor bid the project. But this is a water main to go down West College to Rivian Motorway and down Rivian Motorway and connecting to a water main, a town of normal water main that's already there. So just to be clear on what that is. The other thing you mentioned, Mr. Nord, is directing funds from the underpass to roads. And to be clear, we don't have funds budgeted for the underpass beyond a current contract to design it. So there's nothing to redirect to roads at this point because we haven't budgeted for anything. So.
Oh, there was money that, well, even Mr. McCarthy had said was budgeted years ago that we're spending today, so.
Yeah, it's a current contract.
The stuff that's in this budget, I don't know how much of this is or was approved by previous councils, you know. So at some point, it'd be nice if you could direct us to where the money that's being spent, if it was approved by this council or previous councils, because then we know.
Well, since it's $130 million budget, yeah, if you have a specific question about a specific project, I'd be happy to provide you background information about that. But just, I'm just responding to your statement of redirecting money from the underpass. We don't have construction budgeted. I want to make it clear that the only funds in the budget regarding the underpass are an existing design contract that, you know, we have an agreement, we're paying a contractor to design it. That's it. And then just one other statement, and council may have an opinion about this, but, Mr. Nord, you indicated that the town doesn't earn any money. We just take it. And cultural arts, parks and recreation, inspections department, trust me, there's a lot of earning of the revenue that the town brings in, in various departments. Water fund, so just wanted to be clear that that's not exactly an accurate statement. Yes, we are, the organization and the general is operated primarily by various taxes, but we also have a lot of earned revenue as well. So those are just a few of my comments, Mayor Kus, and thank you for allowing me to have some time.
Thank you, and I think at this point, we will adjourn. It is 7:02. We're behind schedule, but I think we should catch up fairly well. How about 7:17 coming back? People can stand a 15-minute break here. Do not disconnect from this Zoom, by the way. This Zoom is the council meeting Zoom. So just mute and turn your video off, and we'll see you in 15. Thank you. Thank you. Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Can everyone hear me now?
I should.
Yeah, my keeps turning off my, they, they keep muting me and they turn, they shut my, my video off, so I can't be seen either. I don't know, it's keeps telling me host has to do with.
Well, we've got you in audio at least.
Okay.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Yeah. You're with us now, Ms. Cummings. Uh, first order of business is approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of January nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Motion for approval?
Salute.
Any changes or adjustments? Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy.
Hi.
Ms. Cummings.
Hi.
Mr. Nord.
Um, a point of order, did we skip over the special meeting of the liquor commission?
We're, we're in, in the liquor commission, Mr. Nord, we're just approving minutes of the special, of the regular meeting for the liquor commission.
Okay. I.
Ms. Smith.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mayor Kus.
Hi. The minutes are approved. First item on the agenda is a, uh. Complaint and citation case report for JSP LLC doing businesses Joe Station House. Pizza Pub at three oh five South Veterans Parkway, um, uh, in Normal, Illinois. Motion for approval, please.
For approval.
Second.
Uh, before, um, we get into discussion on this item, uh, Mr. Day's gonna give us an overview of the, uh. Special hearing, um, that happened, oh, two weeks ago, I think. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Day. Uh, you do have all that information in your packet today, but I'm gonna ask Mr. Day to give a brief overview.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, if you will recall, Joe Station House was charged with the liquor violation. Uh, they were charged with three violations against their liquor license for allowing. Indoor on premises consumption in violation of the governor's COVID mitigation orders. The town's liquor code requires all licensees to operate their establishments in compliance with all state laws and. Public health regulations. Uh, the complaint against Joe's alleged that the governor's mitigation orders qualified at, both as a state law and a. Public health regulation. Um, under the provisions of our liquor code, we held a hearing. Um, before a hearing officer who heard arguments both factual and legal. Um, the factual arguments, whether or not they were allowing indoor prem, indoor consumption. Was fairly straightforward. We presented officers' testimony who went in and saw people eating indoors, and that wasn't really a contested. Matter. I mean, in fact, if you'll remember, they actually held a press conference at some point, telling the world that they were allowing indoors. Consumption. Uh, what was more of a, um, contention was the legal, various legal arguments. Um, one, their argument was that the governor's orders weren't a state law or a regulation. Um, they questioned the enforcement power of the town to be able to enforce the regulations. Um, so in your packet, you saw the hearing officer released his report of his findings and recommendations. In that he, uh, found one that there was indoor consumption. Um, delete with respect to the legal arguments, he found that one, the COVID orders were a state law or regulation as they are used. In the town's liquor code. He found that nothing in the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act limited enforcement to specific entities. And that nothing prohibited enforcement through our liquor code. Um, he held one of the issues was, um, whether provisions of the. State Department of Public Health Act, um, concerning building quarantine. Applied to this and whether special procedures had to be followed. He said that, that those statutory provisions did not apply, um, relying on the appellate court who. Made the same ruling earlier. Um, he also found that aggravated factors. Apply to this because they were purposely open and the danger that they posed to the public. Um, while he found that those aggravated factors applied, he actually recommended the standard. Penalties that we would apply to any lic- licensee that we found to be in violation. Um, for instance, he's saying steps he applied of the. Uh, penalties would be the same steps we would use for anybody who, um, accidentally sold underage. Um, so his recommendation was for the three violations, a total of seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then we are also asking for costs associated with holding the hearing, which is. So. Comes to a total of fifteen hundred dollars for the hearing officer's time and nine hundred and twenty dollars for the transcript of the hearing.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the hearing officer is a seventeen hundred and fifty dollar fine. Nine hundred and twenty dollars for court reporter and fifteen hundred dollars for hearing officer costs. Uh, that's the recommendation. We'll now open for discussion on that. Does anyone wish to? Make it. Ms. Smith?
Uh, Ms. Mr. Day, um, I, I attended that hearing. And, and listened to the arguments that were made by the, the attorney for, um, the restaurant. Did he cite any case law to support his contention that executive orders were not? Um, enforceable?
No, he did not. Um, in fact, when I looked at the transcript, I don't believe he cited any case law at all. Did include a citation to the one statute I mentioned, the, um. State Department of Public Health Act, as well as to the IEMA statute, but no, he did not. Uh, provide any legal authority for his contention that the governor's orders were not a law.
And, um, did it come out in the hearing, or was it something I might have read from a, um, a news report? That this business had accepted forty thousand dollars, I believe that was the amount. Um, in grant monies from the state to mitigate the financial harm caused by. Um, the, the COVID orders, was that brought up during the hearing?
I believe that was in a news story talking about the hearing, but that did not come up in hearing itself. It wouldn't be part of the violation.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Nord.
Thank you. Um, I've got kind of a parliamentary question first. Um, the hearing officer, why was that someone new brought in? Is this typical?
That is typical.
Yes, that's, and yeah, that's a provision under section four point one eight of our liquor code.
Okay, so for all these hearings, there's always a hearing officer that comes in?
Yes.
Okay, I just thought that was the town's, that was one of the elected folks responsibility. Um, then for this hearing or for this meeting tonight. Um, was the owners and the owner's attorney, were they contacted? And notified of the recommendation and of this meeting tonight?
I know they were notified of the recommendation. I don't know whether or not this particular meeting, they were given this special notice of. Since this isn't part of the underlying hearing.
Um, okay, because they had contacted me and said that they didn't know about this and wanted to know if they were supposed to be getting notice, if they were supposed to show up. Things like that. And I told them I would ask the question because I just, I just do not know. Um, then the total that these folks, the, that they would be responsible for was the total of all these fees. That you had mentioned earlier. While we also have got the ordinance that we just passed. That if they're found guilty here, then they will have to pay their liquor license fee. So they will have that, that they'll have to pay that other liquor license holders will not have to pay. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And is there any potential liability that we're putting ourselves into for some sort of double jeopardy? Because they're gonna be hit with something that was, uh, brought about before even these, uh, complaints were filed.
I would say, um, that you're, one is a, a, a fine for a violation.
Keeps telling me host has to do it.
Well, we've got you in audio at least.
Okay.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Yeah. You're with us now, Ms. Cummings. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Motion for approval.
Salute.
Any changes or adjustments? Please call the rule.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
I'm a point of order. Did we skip over the special meeting of the liquor commission?
We're we are in the liquor commission, Mr. Nord. We're just approving minutes of the special of the regular meeting for the liquor commission.
Okay. I.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Merrickus?
Hi. The minutes are approved. First item on the agenda is a complaint and citation case report for JSP LLC doing businesses Joe Station House Pizza Pub at three oh five South Veterans Parkway in Normal, Illinois. Motion for approval, please.
For approval.
Second.
Before we get into discussion on this item, Mr. Day's going to give us an overview of the special hearing that happened two weeks ago, I think. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Day. You do have all that information in your packet today, but I'm going to ask Mr. Day to give a brief overview.
Thank you, ma'am. If you will recall, Joe Station House was charged with the liquor violation. They were charged with three violations against their liquor license for allowing indoor on-premises consumption in violation of the governor's COVID mitigation orders. The town's liquor code requires all licensees to operate their establishments in compliance with all state laws and public health regulations. The complaint against Joe's alleged that the governor's mitigation orders qualified at both as a state law and a public health regulation. Under the provisions of our liquor code, we held a hearing before a hearing officer who heard arguments both factual and legal. The factual arguments, whether or not they were allowing indoor prem indoor consumption was fairly straightforward. We presented officers' testimony who went in and saw people eating indoors, and that wasn't really a contested matter. In fact, if you'll remember, they actually held a press conference at some point telling the world that they were allowing indoors consumption. What was more of a contention was the legal various legal arguments. One, their argument was that the governor's orders weren't a state law or a regulation. They questioned the enforcement power of the town to be able to enforce the regulations. So in your packet, you saw the hearing officer released his report of his findings and recommendations in that he found one that there was indoor consumption. Delete with respect to the legal arguments, he found that one, the COVID orders were a state law or regulation as they are used in the town's liquor code. He found that nothing in the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act limited enforcement to specific entities and that nothing prohibited enforcement through our liquor code. He held one of the issues was whether provisions of the State Department of Public Health Act concerning building quarantine applied to this and whether special procedures had to be followed. He said that those statutory provisions did not apply, relying on the appellate court who made the same ruling earlier. He also found that aggravated factors apply to this because they were purposely open and the danger that they posed to the public. While he found that those aggravated factors applied, he actually recommended the standard penalties that we would apply to any licensee that we found to be in violation. For instance, he's saying steps he applied of the penalties would be the same steps we would use for anybody who accidentally sold underage. So his recommendation was for the three violations, a total of seventeen one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And then we are also asking for costs associated with holding the hearing, which is comes to a total of fifteen hundred dollars for the hearing officer's time and nine hundred and twenty dollars for the transcript of the hearing.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the hearing officer is a seventeen hundred and fifty dollar fine, nine hundred and twenty dollars for court reporter and fifteen hundred dollars for hearing officer costs. That's the recommendation. We'll now open for discussion on that. Does anyone wish to make it? Ms. Smith?
Miss Mr. Day, I attended that hearing and and listened to the arguments that were made by the attorney for the restaurant. Did he cite any case law to support his contention that executive orders were not enforceable?
No, he did not. In fact, when I looked at the transcript, I don't believe he cited any case law at all. Did include a citation to the one statute I mentioned, the State Department of Public Health Act, as well as to the IEMA statute, but no, he did not provide any legal authority for his contention that the governor's orders were not a law.
And did it come out in the hearing or was it something I might have read from a a news report that this business had accepted forty thousand dollars? I believe that was the amount in grant monies from the state to mitigate the financial harm caused by the COVID orders? Was that brought up during the hearing?
I believe that was in a news story talking about the hearing, but that did not come up in hearing itself. It wouldn't be part of the violation.
Okay.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. I've got kind of a parliamentary question first. The hearing officer, why was that someone new brought in? Is this typical?
That is typical.
Yes, and yeah, that's a provision under section four point one eight of our liquor code.
Okay, so for all these hearings, there's always a hearing officer that comes in?
Yes.
Okay, I just thought that was the town's that was one of the elected folks responsibility. Then for this hearing or for this meeting tonight, was the owners and the owner's attorney, were they contacted and notified of the recommendation and of this meeting tonight?
I know they were notified of the recommendation. I don't know whether or not this particular meeting, they were given this special notice of since this isn't part of the underlying hearing.
Okay, because they had contacted me and said that they didn't know about this and wanted to know if they were supposed to be getting notice, if they were supposed to show up, things like that. And I told them I would ask the question because I just I just do not know. Then the total that these folks that that they would be responsible for was the total of all these fees that you had mentioned earlier. While we also have got the ordinance that we just passed, that if they're found guilty here, then they will have to pay their liquor license fee. So they will have that that they'll have to pay that other liquor license holders will not have to pay. Is that is that accurate?
That is accurate.
And is there any potential liability that we're putting ourselves into for some sort of double jeopardy? Because they're going to be hit with something that was brought about before even these complaints were filed?
I would say that you're one is a fine for a violation, the others and et cetera.
Mr. Day, is that our?
I'll defer to you if I didn't state that properly.
No, yeah, that's correct. Um, no, there's no double jeopardy issue. I'm not quite sure I understood the way you were phrasing it.
Oh, so the violations
Ahead of time.
The violations that were in the hearing happened before we had our vote for the liquor license penalty. So all of that happened before the fact of the liquor license penalty coming into play.
Yeah, I don't believe there'd be any liability for that.
Okay, then for the rest of the council, I contacted the health department to ask if they had issued any citations for any health-related violations against Joe's. They had issued none. They had asked Joe's for a copy of their procedures that they were doing. And, you know, Joe's sent them. I mean, this is all public record. Anybody could have asked for this, but they were working with the health department. Joe's was not trying to get out of social distancing, wearing masks, any of these things. And they were working with the health department. Our neighboring counties and health departments in 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 the state and other municipalities, they were working with their restaurants as well, some of them. And they allowed them to stay open. So Joe's only real crime is being open in Normal. Had they have chosen to put their business in another community, likely they would not be before us. So, you know, what I look at this as is we're basically setting a precedence for advertising to the business community that if you open in Normal, we will be far more stringent and restrictive on you than anywhere else that you go in the state. And, you know, I think that's bad because that's going to hurt economic development. It's going to hurt our business relations. It's going to be hard for us to recover from that reputation because it will be etched in stone. So I think we need to decide, is it worth? Is it? Is it worth that? You know, I've asked the town manager if there was some carrot that was dangled in front of Normal from the governor for us to push this forward, and she said she did not know of anything. You know, I don't know if the mayor can speak to that. Is there some other reason why we're pushing this so hard when our neighbors have not? Neighbors other than Bloomington have not?
Thank you for clearing that up, Mr. Nord, because Bloomington went through this exact process. And so I guess you're assuming that or asking me if I've had some kind of backroom deal with the governor. Is that your question?
Is there something? I mean, is there?
Is that your question? Is that your question, Mr. Nord?
I don't know if it's the governor or anyone, but is there a reason other than you and the town manager wanted them to close?
I think whether or not they're closed will be decided by the liquor commission here.
Well, I'm talking about
We have a recommendation here, Mr. Nord, and normally I would be offended at the at the idea that there was some backroom deal being made between me, the governor, or some state entity for some reason yet identified. But I'm not going to be angry about that. I'm just going to chuckle with that one.
Well, I can tell you exactly what the basis of it is. When we had the meeting about the liquor license carrot approach we were going to do, you had mentioned that you just got off the phone with the governor's office. And, you know, that is why I'm asking is what was that conversation about? Did it have to do with this? Because we didn't solicit help and input from the health department then. So so that's why, and I think it's legitimate question.
If if I referenced conversations with the governor's office, it was a public conversation with statewide with the Illinois Municipal League Board, and there was a conversation statewide with the Illinois Municipal League Board with the director of the state police. What it wasn't a conversation necessarily. It was it was an informational meeting.
Right, then another comment I have is during the same timeframe that I guess you're saying that Joe's should have not allowed indoor dining. There were hot. There were members of this council and the town staff, the high-level staff that are in this meeting. They were having well, that ordered food and dined inside in the conference room that we have our two-on-one meetings. So, you know, that was just days before the first complaint was filed by, you know, a very member of this group. So I just find this very hypocritical. And I wonder if we vote to put this penalty against Joe's, you know, that first violation, whatever that dollar amount is, with the folks that were in that meeting, would they be willing to pay that same penalty for basically the same crime, eating indoors?
Good luck with that, Mr. Nord.
I'm just asking because that's what we're doing.
Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. So I want to, I think I look at this maybe from a different angle than my colleague, Mr. Nord, but I do have some reservations about this nonetheless. And my, I guess my, I'll start off with a question. Am I understanding this correct, that the violation of the liquor code, which we are citing as reason for refining Joe's, is that within the liquor code, it says you must abide by all state and federal laws? I mean, that's in reading through this, that is the piece of the liquor code that is not being adhered to, and hence the reason for this violation. Is that is that correct? Can Mr. Day or somebody confirm that I'm understanding that part correct?
Yes, for being a violation of state laws, and there's another provision talking about regulations concerning public health.
So my hesitation, Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Day, my hesitation and concern with this is that it's not, the reasoning behind it is not a violation of the liquor code itself, the substance of, you know, serving to a minor, doing, you know, not storing alcohol at the correct temperature, things that would actually be of substance in the liquor code. Instead, it is a violation just of a state law, the governor's executive orders. And I guess I throw it out there that if this is the kind of thing that we're going to use the liquor code for to enforce against small businesses who are struggling in Normal, then does that mean at any time, any, you know, liquor license holder in Normal doesn't adhere to all state and federal laws, regardless of their substance, that we will then be pursuing them with the liquor code? And, you know, there are a wide range of examples that can be used. If there is a business that is late in paying their state income tax, does that mean that we're going to go after them for liquor code? I mean, it the only item that is used as substance behind this fine is that they violated state, not anything actually within the liquor code, you know, revolving around the liquor code itself. I just have a problem with, and especially at a time when our businesses are struggling. I don't, I think this is a state issue. And if the state wants to enforce it, the state should enforce it. It's not our problem.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess I'll take get a different perspective on this as well. I guess, you know, as a small business owner, I tend to to come from that perspective on this. And so I'll share that perspective here, you know, as a as a small business owner that myself has been impacted by COVID and my operations. I'm going to stand with my fellow business owners and and I called up and talked with a number of restaurant owners here in Normal to get their insight about this issue. I talked about it last time, and and I'll reiterate this time is that, you know, businesses just want to know clearly what are the rules? So they can plan and they can react as best as possible in their businesses. And two, businesses want a level playing field. They don't want anybody advantaged or disadvantaged unfairly. Joe's operated outside of the rules that everybody else was playing by. We all nobody's questioning that. Okay, all the businesses I spoke to, all the restaurants, similar businesses, not random businesses, but similar businesses I spoke who favored some consequences for noncompliance, so everybody would play by the same rules. That's what they wanted. I think that's reasonable. I I think that Mr. Day's clearly set out the legal arguments. I'm not going to speak to that because that's not my area of expertise. So when we start talking of businesses, the other businesses were being disadvantaged by Joe's. And that is their opinion. It continued to operate and generate revenue while everybody else was complying. So arguably, everybody else was hurt. As far as how we're using the liquor code, I don't know, Mr. Day, if you want to weigh in on the appropriateness and that in a minute. I'll give you that opportunity because I do have a question on that. But the other point is the the fees that are being discussed here are in line with any other fees that would be imposed under this statute. So I think the fees are appropriate on that point. And then I think of interest and import for our discussion, but not necessarily binding or or overriding is that we are demonstrating parity with Bloomington. Bloomington did issue a liquor violation and impose a penalty. We all at some point or another have talked about how the importance of acting as one community. I think this is another important part, so businesses don't get treated one way in one community and differently in another. Again, businesses want to know that they have a level playing field. That's what they have told me. And and so in this case, I think that is important. I think that that there has to be consequences if we break the law. When one question that's supposed to be by three restaurant owners was Kevin, if if you guys don't impose some kind of consequences for people breaking the laws and the rules that the rest of us are following, why should any of us? Why should any of us follow these rules? We're trying to do our part. We're trying to be good community citizens. We're trying to do our part in this pandemic to survive and take care of public health. What's our incentive if there's no consequences for those who are breaking those rules? I don't have a good answer for those businesses. I don't, other than consequences for breaking rules. As far as 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 the law's arguments and using liquor code to as a as a tool, Mr. Day, you want to speak to that about the legality of that for a minute, and then I'll have a comment to yours.
Sure. There is, and this came up during the hearing, there is a body of law on taking action against the liquor license for various other offenses that are not strictly service requirements. And there's a litany of cases that allow that. There's, don't want to go through them all again, but for instance, to somebody who are selling drugs on the property, you could use that as a reason to revoke the liquor license. The taxes that Mr. Preston mentioned, those are already taken care of in other provisions of both state and local. So it wouldn't be an income tax if you're in arrears on that. You'd already have liquor license problems outside of this particular. What the courts look at, what the state liquor commission looks at is really the operation of your establishment or the way you're operating some kind of violation. So if there's some minor violation, it wasn't really a factor of your operation, then they won't hold that. But if you're operating your premises in a way that violates a law, then the courts have held upheld action taken on against licenses on that basis.
So correct me if I'm wrong in my paraphrasing again, legal is yours. Succinct is mine, her attempt at succinct is mine. So if a business is operating themselves illegally in some way, the liquor license is granted as a privilege for following the rules for operating your business legally. Is that a reasonable statement?
Say that again. It was succinct, but.
Sure. So a liquor license is granted, is a privilege granted by the state of Illinois for operating your business legally, according to the the laws of the state of Illinois and the municipalities in which they operate. Is that a reasonable statement?
It is a privilege, yes.
So we're not talking about widespread irresponsible use of the liquor code here. We're talking about a business who didn't follow state rules and didn't follow public health guidance, the foundation of those state rules.
Right. And in this case, I think it's important to note, these are rules specifically targeted to the operation of their establishments. I mean, thank you for some arcane rule that even though the law can go far on that, I mean, I think my favorite one that we talked about during the hearing is the grocery store that was monkeying with their scales and charging too much. You know, pound of ground beef was coming in at more than a pound, and that was enough to take action against the liquor license because it was deemed to be an irresponsible operation of their establishment.
Again, germane to the operations. So I I'm not at all concerned about this. Mr. Day, you've helped enlighten us about that there actually are boundaries and our ability to use the liquor license germane to the operations of the business and 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 personally, I'm not concerned about that. I reserve time for further comment. Thank you.
And reflecting back, this hasn't happened in quite a while. There have been multiple situations in in town or normal previous liquor hearings where licensees were fined or suspended operations as a result of nonpaying taxes. And that's not new ground. Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to be labored too much on the issue tonight. You know, we are talking about the the denial of wanting to follow rules by one business who profited while others were not able to specifically, some that I know of, Stave, Medici, Destil. These are some of our businesses within our community who followed the rules and did not have the benefit of not following the rules. And so into it, it blows my mind to basically say that the governor's executive order has no weight. So I would love to see other executive orders be treated the same way then, if that's such the case. But, you know, if if the governor issued it, I I believe that it it carries weight as being the leader of our state, whether we agree with it or not, or our political preference or not. Once it has gone forth, then it is incumbent upon us to take heed. Something I do want to clarify because I am probably a little nauseated by some a particular comment that keeps coming up. There was a meeting, and let's be clear, a meeting with six people in a room, well, social distance, because anybody who knows me that this has not been easy for me. I hate going into stores during pandemic because actually I felt more safer in that room socially distanced than I do go into any grocery store where most people will not get off my back, and I have had to ask people to give me my six feet distance. Let me please continue. The situation was as if most people who were in the room, they were in their place of employment. And what I keep hearing is basically saying people should not be allowed to eat in their place of employment. Because if I, as a full-time employee of State Farm, and a meeting was held during my work, a meeting was held during my lunch hour, and it was going to be required for me to attend. In the cases that I've encountered, then lunch is provided by my leadership so that it can be accessible during the meeting while not denying us lunch, which is a requirement of law to allow people to have their lunch. Which is a requirement um, of law to allow people to have their lunch. Um, another thing, not everyone in the room. Ate their lunch at that time and most people, one particular person. Went to a meeting, came to speak and share in our meeting, left, took their lunch with them to go to another meeting. Um, so this was not just, we were not frolicking and just dining casually having a good old. Hunky dory time and, and sharing in drinks and laughter. This was about business. This was to take care of the business of the town. Those who were there were working. Um, and they were on work hours, but we asked them to um, utilize their lunchtime. To share with council members, things that were very important. Um, so. Whether we want to consider this a business or not, it is. We still have to abide certain legal guidelines. And allowing people their lunch is one of them. Um, and so I, I am tired of hearing. That this loosely, that this was some dining as if we were just um, hanging out with friends. That was not the issue and I want that to be on record and very, very clear.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I think is important to point out in terms of the discussion was uh, with the help of Mr. Day. Uh, a letter was prepared and sent to Joe's Station House Pizza, pointing out that they were in violation. Of certain statutes of state regulation and to please stand down and uh, there were, I think. Somewhere in the neighborhood of two to three weeks before we took action. Uh, moving forward on that, uh, I'm not really sure, but I mean, we gave them time to give it consideration to comply. Um, Ms. Smith.
Yes, um. I wanted to come back to the whole idea of the double dipping that this business did. Um, by accepting the, the money from the state. They were also taking that money from taxpayers with one hand and then. Deciding that regardless of the stipulations attached to that. In an effort to mitigate the harm caused to, to restaurants because restaurants, you have to take your mask off to eat. There hasn't been any food that is able to, in, you are able to ingest without opening your mouth and therefore putting your mask down. It is a unique situation different from shopping. Different from, from being in big box stores where you're passing by people who have their mask on. No one has to take their mask off. To, to pick up some light bulbs at the hardware store, but you have to take your mask off for an extended period of time. In an area that may or may not have the ventilation. To mitigate the harm of an airborne illness. And in recognition of that, the state had provided these monies to help restaurants. I understand part of the reason a restaurant would, would want to stay open. The markup on drinks and especially alcoholic drinks is considerably higher than the markup on food. This is one of the reasons why restaurants, other restaurants are, are felt that they're at a disadvantage. Knowing that, both Bloomington and Normal made it possible for restaurants to. Bend the liquor laws and say, we'll allow you to do carryout. And restaurants adapted to that. Restaurants adapted with pickup, delivery and carryout. I think it's a mark of privilege that this restaurant not only felt it, it was above the law. But it could broadcast that. And in the, the arguments made by their attorney, there was no case law to support them. There was opinion. And I think we've all witnessed what happens when individuals act as if they are above the law. And I, I do not think as a counsel, when we take an oath. That we are defending the laws that we get to pick and choose. And I moved here from Georgia. In the South, when there were individuals that disagreed with laws, they had the courage to stick by that conviction and go to jail. We're not asking this business to close. We're not asking them to go to jail. We're imposing a consequence of a, a legal fine. And I think that's more than reasonable of how it was calculated and why it's done and it does uh, make every attempt. To low, level the playing field for all the businesses.
And Mr. Noah.
Thank you. Um, it was my understanding that the money that everybody was able to get. If you qualified was coming from the federal government, not the state government. So. You know, I just think that's clear to point out that the federal government would be the ones that would be putting strings attached to things if it's money that they're. Giving out, but also what I think we're missing is there was so much uncertainty as to what businesses were supposed to do. And you know, at the council meeting, the mayor said that with this indoor dining. We would hand over complaints to the health department. So that was something that was put out there. And if you're a business owner, you look and you talk to the health department and they say, you know, we don't, we don't uh, you know. Have any violations to give you, just give us your plan. And so you go down the route, you. Follow the health department's guidance and then you also look at neighboring communities. And talk to the business owners there and see what they're doing to build a plan and they're doing something, they're working and they're open. So you know, then out of the blue, the mayor, a few days after he said he was going to send all complaints to the health department. Sends a letter saying, close your doors, follow the governor's orders or else. And you know, what is a business, who, who is the business supposed to listen to? And which piece of news are they supposed to listen to? I mean, uncertainty all over the state. You know, every municipality is taking this different. They don't know of any that has gone to the extent we're going to. Um, right now. So you know, I think that we should be a little bit compassionate. And put yourself in that business's shoes and think, who do I listen to? Cause they have so many people telling them conflicting bits of information in different communities in the state get to do. Different things. So. You know, and as far as leveling. The playing ground and being fair, let's be realistic. There is no such thing as leveling the playing ground and being fair when it comes to restaurants and bars. I mean, in normal, we gave money to Portillo's to come in and compete with other businesses. It was taking. Tax dollars that these other restaurants were paying and were giving it to help subsidize their competition to come in. We did the same thing. Pila Brothers. So this level playing ground is not a valid argument. It's just. Well, th- this is a point that I'm making and we just need to be compassionate and put ourselves in the shoes of the person that we're going to be. Penalizing, you know, is it, is it, is it um, reasonable to assume that. They were being completely blatant, you know, in my minds and especially after talking to the helper. Communicating with the health department, they were working with the health department. We're saying this was a health issue. Well, the health department are the ones, their task to tell us if this is a health issue or not. I do not subscribe to getting all my news from Facebook and assumption. So they were not included and I think that, you know, I just think we need to. Keep that perspective.
Ms. Lorenz.
Thank you. Um, I got a couple of points to make. I guess I'm gonna start with the, with the question, um. Either for mayor or. Uh, staff member, did we have? Did we ever have the health department? Reach out to us and, and not just us as, as town and normal, but basically in, in community conversations. And, and, and ask for help.
Define help.
Help in, um, you know, we're swamped. We've got, we only have so much resources and you know, there's. We are not equipped uh, for enforcement. We need help.
Not to me.
There were conversations with, and it wasn't the health department in specific, it was the county and the state's attorney's office where. Various uh, options were discussed on enforcement. Um, including liquor license or passing a home rule ordinance or other issues.
Okay.
But yes, there have been discussions with the county.
Interesting. Okay. Um, so you know, um. I think this, to, to stay focused on this issue, let's not, let's not kind of veer off into, um. Whether or not it was right or wrong for the governor to, to shut down restaurants. Okay. Um, we could debate that and we will as a country, I'm sure, debate, you know. Uh, and debrief the COVID response for years and decades to come. So I believe we need to stay focused on. Restaurants were closed down, agree with it or not, through an executive order. And so there's two questions really at, at hand here. One is. Was that executive order legally enforceable? And two, does the town through the liquor commission have the jurisdiction to. Enforce a violation of this, um, of this uh, executive order. And as I read the, the report from the hearing officer, he did lay out. Through either case law or citing of other, you know, the emergency management acts, um, that A. The, the um, emergency declaration from the governor is in fact law. And secondly, that it is within. Uh, I think they called it subdivisions of the state, which I think is a fancy way of saying cities and towns. Um, that it is within their jurisdiction to help enforce. Such declarations during a time of disaster. And so as he heard the arguments from both sides, from, from the defense and then from the town. His conclusion was that the argument put forth, and he actually even supported with, with further citations. Of, of law that the argument put forth that yes, it's a law and yes, it's enforceable by the. Liquor commission is in fact a valid argument. And so. I mean, that's why we have the hearing and I, and, and so I side with the hearing officer and in this case, his. Uh, legal judgment of, of law and case law. Um. I have also put myself or tried to put myself in the shoes of, of, of a restaurant, okay? And to show compassion and to think about, you know, the economic toll that this has taken on small businesses, the economic toll. Of unemployment and laid off hospitality workers. Um, and so, um. I just kind of want to paraphrase, but read to you the sentiment of, of, of another. Similar restaurant and small business owner. Does it make sense that an unlawful business is allowed to thumb their nose? At the government and profit while the lawful businesses must remain closed or restricted. Or face the threatened consequences from the Illinois Liquor Control Commission. You think what we're struggling with here is that none of the restaurants wanted to be closed. They're all mad as hell. And, but some of them, in fact, most of them, like an enormous majority of them seem to. Either through their own legal understanding or common sense, clearly understand that it was time to close down. And so the argument of uncertainty, I don't know that I really buy that because. Everybody else seemed to interpret and, and act accordingly. Um. So, so these restaurants, I'm not sure that they really had uncertainty. They complied. And much like maybe, oh, I don't know, you know. Maybe managing a classroom, right, of children. Um. If you let one kid get away with something and the other nineteen are, are behaving, well, how's that make the other nineteen feel? How come this kid gets, gets away with it? I mean, it's kind of human nature here. And so I am putting myself in the shoes, this, in this case of a small business owner who did comply. And found it crystal clear that he did need to comply. And I guess the last point I'll make is that if anything, and this is perhaps to Mr. Preston's point. If anything, we're struggling with here is the fact that the state really has done not a lot of help in enforcing this. To the point that Mr. Day just had, members of, of the county. Uh, and the health, maybe it wasn't the health department, but members of our county kind of looked at us and was like, I don't know. You know, I mean, if I had to do this all over again, and by goodness sake, I don't want to have to go through a pandemic again. You know, I, I really wish the state, if they're gonna enforce something, if they're gonna declare something, I mean, it's like parenthood 101. If you're gonna say something, you better be ready to enforce it. And so to the extent that the state declared something and then kind of went out, you know, left it out there, like hanging in the air. And nobody really knew how to enforce it. I mean, if anything, that's the, the, on, the uncertainty. And so if I want to be critical of any segment here of, of this whole piece is, is with the state. And, and kind of leaving it to us. But maybe, you know, just like the many, many unfunded mandates that the state gives us, I shouldn't be surprised. So you know, this is where we're at. I think we, we have a hearing and a hearing officer. Who clearly laid out the legal aspect, the enforceability aspect, and I think actually. Gave a pretty reasonable assessment of what the, of what the um, fines should be. I mean, honestly, seventeen hundred dollars plus another two thousand, twenty-five hundred. Uh, you know, who knows, these isolated businesses might have looked at this and said, you know what? Cost of doing business. You know, and they, they had fifty-some people in one occasion that we know of in their, in their restaurant. And you know, it was the cost of doing business. So that's my thoughts. Thanks.
Please call the role.
Oh, Mr. McCarthy, you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, clarification of some stuff that was said. One is. You, you, mayor in your, in your letter as acting as the liquor commissioner, I believe was your uh. Role of that letter. Uh. It was stated that you ordered the business to close. Is that accurate?
Yes.
You ordered the business to shut up, down operations and close, or did you, uh?
I'm citing, citing a law, yeah.
That they had to comply with. As it was stated that you told them that they had to close operations and that's. It, it, my understanding was that that's not what the letter said.
No, there was never, there was never a, a threat to close.
Okay, just wanted to.
The, uh, there was never a, an order to close, but there was an order to cease indoor dining.
Okay. So just to comply with the governor's rules.
Okay, just, just wanted to make sure I was there. Um, and, and not that this is all together germane, but according to a Panograph article, I didn't hear it or get it. The health department said they don't have the authority to enforce these rules, so they weren't doing anything about it. Uh, again, I talked to the health department, that was a Panograph story, whether or not it's true or not. I uh, have no idea. Uh, last point, again, as a small business owner, I'm empathizing with businesses, uh, my. Businesses I talked to were very much akin to Ms. Lorenz's quote. Um, but uh, you know, as a community, I think. We all appreciate the gravity of the, of what's going on here. And we all have our favorite restaurants and we all have our. You know, places that we like to go, have our favorite meals or our, you know, the pizza that we like or, you know, the. The beer that we enjoy. I, I know I do and I, I know that none of them are able to operate fully here. And, and so it's, it's not that we can't empathize with our small businesses, we can. What we're trying to just make sure is that we all get to play by the same rules and that, that, that we're doing the best we can. To try to take care of our community and our business, not that we're pitting one against the other. And I just want to put that out there. I, you know, I feel bad for all of them. I don't, you know. And I just want to put that out there. I, you know, I feel bad for all of them. I don't, you know, whatever their product is, whatever their level of restaurant and services is, this is really hard and, and we all know that. Um, and that's, I've said it in probably three other meetings already. That's why part of our job was to, to reach out to our federal legislators to provide, to provide some relief for, for these businesses. But I certainly don't want to encourage, um, people breaking the rules by, by not ruling, uh, according to the recommendations here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Nord, you've already had your two, um, times to speak, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
I didn't use all my time.
Robert's Rules of Order say you get two times to speak. Up to, but not, it's not a, uh, all-inclusive number.
Someone else had yielded their time to use it later. So I just have one quick statement. If we vote for this, I.
Mr. Nord, you're out of order. Please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings? Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
No.
Mr. McCarthy? Mayor Kuss?
Hi. Uh, my recommendation is living a fine of seventeen hundred and fifty dollars plus the inclusion of court, uh, reporter for nine hundred and twenty dollars and a, uh, the costs of a hearing officer for fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, item five is a liquor license application for Logan's Roadhouse to LLC doing business as Logan's Roadhouse 313 South Veterans Parkway, um, motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. This is, uh, no change of, um, operation is a change of corporate ownership only, transferring that license. Is there a discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi, a class D liquor, liquor license for Logan's Roadhouse is approved. That concludes our business, uh, motion for adjournment.
Second.
Is there public comment, point of order? I mean, is there comments, council comments?
On what, Mr. Nord?
At, at the end of this meeting.
No, there is not.
It's not on the agenda?
No, it is not. Oh, there, it is. You're right. I'm sorry. There are concerns. Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Um, a concern I have is with the, uh, um, message that we sent to businesses to, well, businesses and our peers in other communities. So since our stance, our group's stance was that this was wrong to allow businesses to be open, then I'm going to ask this council and the mayor to write a letter to the peers of ours throughout the state, censuring them for allowing their restaurants to be open and allowing any member of the council to sign on to that letter before it's sent out. I think that's the least we can do.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCarthy?
Trying, trying to remember to lower my hand. I'm terrible at that. Yeah, I think, um, I just want to, again, clarify, uh, nobody's told that they were, uh, that we were closing any businesses down. Businesses are, and, uh, able to do curbside to go. Customers are allowed to go in and out of those businesses for that. Um, the statement keeps getting made that businesses are being closed down and they are not. I just want to make sure that's clarified. Uh, that's unfortunate phrasing. Uh, I, I hope we'll change that. At the time of these violations, uh, indoor dining was not allowed and that was what was being ceased, but restaurants and, uh, are able to, uh, still continue to operate. Thank you.
And now I'll take that motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi. Uh, liquor commission is adjourned. Call to order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council uh, for Monday, February first, twenty twenty-one. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi, here, sorry.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the comfort level of Mr. Day, the governor has issued a disaster declaration related to the public health concerns caused by the statewide COVID-19 pandemic. As mayor, I've determined that an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent because of the risk of the exposure to the COVID-19 virus stemming from an indoor gathering and that a remote meeting is in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of the council staff and general public. We have no public comment at the beginning of this meeting. We do have a commenter at the end of the meeting. Uh, so we'll move to the omnibus agenda. Item was considered routine, taken by one, with one vote. Unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Mr. Nord?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item B as in boy.
Thank you. Motion for approval?
Second.
Items considered, uh, under the omnibus agenda are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. An ordinance abating the levy of the twenty twenty property taxes for special service area number one. Uh, resolution authorizing frame rail replacement and corrosion repairs to a two thousand nine Pierce fire engine. Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Hi.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mayor Kuss?
Hi. The omnibus agenda is approved. Item B is a report to receive and file town normal expenditures for payment as of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Nord?
I still move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. On PDF page twenty-four, uh, the, the fire station funds. There's an expense for, um, fire station. Ms. Reese, I believe you had mentioned this was design. Could you kind of explain what this is and when it was, or what it is?
Uh, sure. Absolutely, Mr. Nord. Thanks for asking. It's not pertaining to design. This is the final payment to PJ Hair to close out the actual construction. PJ Hair was the contractor on the new, on, well, was new, uh, headquarters fire station on Main Street. This is the retainage that we've been holding for a number of years until they actually, uh, found the final solution for, um, some, I'm going to say some striping on the apparatus bay floor. And they have now concluded that we found a solution that works, or they found a solution that works. And so we have now released the final retainage for payment of construction on the Main Street Headquarters Station.
Okay, so this was a percentage holdback for something? It's not like the work cost, what was it, fifty-some thousand dollars?
No, no, no. We just wanted to make sure they got the work done and, you know, made it through all the punch lists and found a solution that we would accept.
I thought I, for some reason I had it in my mind, this was for the fire station that was going over on the east side of town by Menards. So, thank you for clarifying that. I have nothing further.
Uh, please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Hi.
Mr. Nord?
Hi.
Ms. Smith?
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Hi.
Mr. Preston?
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy? Mayor Kuss?
Hi. The item is approved. Uh, we have four items of general orders tonight, three, uh, of which are intertwined. Um, the first is a resolution conditionally approving a final development plan. Uh, phase four, the J and M planned unit development at College Cottage Avenue and Village Court.
Move approval.
Okay, uh, council members, you received via email, uh, a change in the, in the resolutions. There was, uh, some concern from the developer in terms of when to, um, grant an easement for future bike trail. Uh, and that has been resolved, um, and, and reflected in the agreement that, that's being made. Is that correct, Ms. Reese?
That is correct. Uh, thank you, Mayor. We do have, um, Ms. Davidson and Mr. Trummel on the, on the, um, Zoom call to answer any questions you might have. I do want to point out though that you have not noticed this yet, but moments ago during our break, I emailed to you just a corrected resolution. Um, the mayor is accurate. A modified amended resolution was sent to you earlier this afternoon to reflect, um, the dedication of the right of way for the trail. That I just noticed earlier during, um, I think it was during liquor commission or perhaps, yeah, I think it was during the liquor commission discussion that there was a typo in the title. It should reflect phase four, not phase three. So I changed it to phase four and sent it off to you. So the bottom line is you do have in your email system a corrected resolution that simply changes um, to a resolution conditionally approving a final, uh, development plan, phase four for J and M development. And, um, certainly we're prepared to answer any questions council may have.
Is there a discussion on the, uh, approval of the final development? Ms. Smith?
Yes, and I, I wrote to Ms. Reese earlier because I noticed there was plans for us, a trail access between two buildings and then there's easement. And so, um, it's two separate issues, if my understanding is correct. The, the access to the trail is for an internal trail to the unit development residence. But the easement would provide access to the public should Constitution Trail uh, in some offshoot or branch be extended out past that development. So that's, that's the difference between the easement and the trail access. The, the onsite property, the onsite trail is for the residence. But the easement, should a trail extension be, uh, in the future, would provide public access to that trail, correct? Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. I was just going to, uh, highlight that I think it's, um, nice and noteworthy anytime uh, a developer is choosing to continue to invest in Normal. Uh, this is a, a product type of, um, housing that we do not have a surplus of. It is not student housing. Like I know we have, uh, seen a number of developments, uh, from across the board come, uh, come to us in years past, uh, for, and I'm glad to see people continuing to build in Normal. And from, uh, everything that I gather, uh, these, um, houses are quite popular and, um, and going quickly as they're built. So glad to, uh, glad to see that. Thanks.
Um, Ms. Lorenz?
Okay, um, I got a couple of questions and I'm, I'm actually still seeing, seeing it on the, on the new one. There's a typo in section one that dates the final plat is being dated on this date. Twenty-one August of twenty twenty-one. So I don't know that that's, I thought that that was a twenty twenty plat. So some clarification there. Um, then the, the other question I have is, um, having to do with the changing of the language from the easement for the trail versus a dedication. Um, is that dedication of the right of way, is that to happen right away or is that to happen sometime in the future as needed?
The way I understand it, it's to be dedicated right away. Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, the dedication will happen right away, the trail.
Okay, alrighty. So the dedication is happening right away?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
That is correct. Mr. Day, your audio is not working very well. We can't hear you, so.
Okay, and then the last thing I think that I have is, um, having to do with the, um, trail access between units thirty-three and thirty-four and the hard surface. Where is that going and, and, and why, I guess? Is, is that part of the connection that's in, uh, more of a private, um, agreement to hubby, uh, to the, yeah, to the Oaks on Hubby?
Um, no, so basically there's, um, the recreational area that serves the entire development is in this prairie area that's on the east side of the whole development. And so essentially it ends up being adjacent to the backyards of all the easternmost units and there's no, there's no direct way to get to it except between the units, like, but between, like, in the side yards. And so in order for people in the development to get access to the trail that serves them, this little hard surface sidewalk would be that, would be that access for them. It's not publicly accessible. It's not, it doesn't connect to the Oaks on Hubby. It's purely for this neighborhood.
Okay. And the reason for that is, I mean, it just, it seems kind of picky. I- is there, is there a reason to make it hard surface?
He, well, I mean, yeah, the, yes, uh, there's a, it's just the most permanent way to make it easy for people to see how they are able to access that trail. If it's not there, no one would really think to just walk through the side yard between units thirty-three and thirty-four. Um, so a hard surface trail would just be the kind of the announcement. Like, it's kind of like a trailhead, like we have off the trail into the underwood parking lot. So.
Okay. All right, well, um, so I, 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 I just in general, I just felt like this was, this was somewhat of a, um, kind of a complicated issue. Um, you know, we, we have this development that's happening. That's a great thing. It's, it's like Mr. Preston says, you know, very much sought after. It's a good product. And, um, yet, you know, we had, we had kind of a lot of things that didn't go well with it, you know? I mean, you've got this, um, the, well, it's, it's the next one up, but the vacation of the easement, you know? And then, um, you know, now we're talking about the, the future, um, trail extension. I'm glad we got some resolution on that and then, you know, still kind of this, this, uh, short section of a, of a hard surface um, trail connector. Uh, you know, I, overall, I guess I just want to caution that we do not drive inadvertently, drive away good developers on, on kind of picky things. And that's, that's the only thing that I'm, I am concerned about for this. I, I, I mean, obviously I want to go, it to go through, but I think just as a reflection on ourselves, let's make sure that, you know, we get stuff right and, um, you know, we, we're not nitpicking lots of stuff. Uh, I mean, this, this developer pays a lot, like all developers do, you know, they, they pay some handsome fees and rightfully so for Parkland and school and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Um, you know, we want to make it as easy as possible for them. And I just feel like this one, giving birth to this one seemed a little hard. So, um, you know, that's just maybe a, a comment to consider. Um, and so I guess the only last thing is, is where I started, which is with section one, maybe the date needs to be a, a corrected.
Thank you for catching that. I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Day on, on what that date should be in section one. I appreciate your comments. I just want to point out, you know, staff does an excellent job of working with all developers. You know, we, we on one hand get accused for not being consistent and then we get. You know, we, we on one hand get accused for not being consistent and then we get, you know, told that we need to make, you know, to work with folks. And so I think we're, I think we're kind of constantly trying to walk the line to get the plan that was approved by the planning commission constructed as intended and as people understood it to be, and then certainly work with developers and do all we can because it is a benefit to the community. So I, I hear what you're saying. I also know that you can appreciate all the, the varying positions we're in with, with every development that comes along and trying to get it from concept to actually construction and occupancy is, it can be a challenge and certainly the outcome is generally very positive. So this, the first three phases have been very good. We look forward to phase four and, and we know it's going to be very popular.
Mr. McCarthy?
If I make it through this meeting with putting my hand down every time, I want credit for that.
You're doing, you're doing pretty good so far.
So far. Comment, no question really, I guess, as I, I looked at these coupled actions for us tonight, harking back, I think most of us in fact have been here through most of these since the inception of this, this project. And I think those of us who were very excited about this project and, you know, a different product that wasn't, that some have already said. And, you know, the prairie grass and a potential trail and all of those things that were shown to us in pretty pictures at the beginning. And I'm, I'm grateful that the outcome here is that we still get the pretty pictures that we saw in the beginning. Thanks staff for your hard work and, and the developer, you know? Developers have challenges doing what they do and they're going to ask for what they're going to ask for. And staff, you know, you try to apply things consistently to everybody. And in this case, we seem to come out with a happy resolution where the developer is doing what the developer wants. And staff has done their job to apply the rules fairly and evenly to everybody else. And, and we've got a positive outcome. And I just want to underline that here is, is that we've got a really good outcome for everybody. And I know to collect work on both parties, so thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Question about this, because you're right, this has been before us a few times. You've kind of seen the whole evolution. Question for staff, I believe, gosh, maybe it was a year ago. It possibly may have been longer. This came before and they were going to do onsite water retention. There was a berm that was going to be down by the creek and that went away and now they're doing a fee in lieu. Just for consistency, because we've seen it handled different elsewhere. What is the thought process whether you allow a water retention versus pay a fee in lieu, I mean, for a consistency? What is the staff's process and thought process for when it's allowed, when it's not allowed? And when someone can go one route and then the other route?
Yeah, so that's an evaluation that's made by our engineering department and that was determined early on. If there was never going to be retention on this site, that was never part of the plan. And there was never a berm by the creek. So, so I, there was talk at one point about just the, the waterway that kind of runs through the prairie, doing some best management practices with prairie plantings, which they're doing. So, so that, that hasn't changed at all. But that, as far as when retention is required versus not, that, that is a question I can't answer. It's engineering, so.
So it's engineering's decision whether or not it's allowed. Is it based on location, how much property they're using? Or is it just different every time?
I mean, it's based on engineering standards. I just wouldn't want to hazard an explanation because it's way out of my lane.
You know, the only thing I'll follow up, Mr. Nord, is that it's a good question. This, this development was approved by our, a previous engineer who had been with the town for thirty-plus years. And that was his decision in working with the developer's engineer to allow a fee in lieu. And they paid that fee upfront in phase one for the entire development. And as Ms. Davidson indicated, there was, there was never a rendition of this plan that included onsite detention. Essentially, there's the creek basin. There's a, there's a storm sewer system that serves the development. And the stormwater interior to the, the development is collected in the, in, in those pipes and essentially makes its way to the creek. But in addition to that, they paid a fee in lieu and they paid the full fee upfront in phase one, so.
Okay, thank you.
Please call and roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item eight is a resolution conditionally vacating an easement within the J and M planned unit development lot number one at Cottage Avenue and Village Court. Motion for approval. Discussion on this item. Please call and roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item nine is a resolution conditionally approving the first amended final plat of J and M planned unit development again at Cottage Avenue and Village Court.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Again, Mayor, if possible, I'll just remind council that the, we did provide you with an amended resolution this afternoon to, to reflect this change in the trail dedication.
Correct. Point of order. Do we need to make a motion to adopt this amendment since it was already put out to the public one way? And I'm not questioning whether we should do this, approve this or not, just to make sure that it doesn't, that it's going through the right steps.
No, you don't need a motion for that. The only requirements for any notice for this is actually just the agenda itself. So as long as we're not making changes that fall outside of the scope of the agenda, then we can modify any of the underlying documents that we put out.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion on this item. Please call and roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings? Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuz?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item ten is a presentation of the future allocation of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars in community development block, block grant coronavirus CDBG CV funds.
Move approval.
Mr. Long, if you want to go ahead and give us the overview on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thank you for your time tonight. I know you've been at it for a while here, so I'll keep my remarks very brief. Essentially, what we're here to do tonight, this presentation's purpose is really just to kick off the public comment phase for this, for what is ultimately an amendment to the town's five-year plan. Included in that is the budget or action plan for this current fiscal year that ends March thirty-first, of course. And what that amendment seeks to do is allocate the second CDBG CV allocation, the money that came to the town through the CARES Act from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and put it toward housing assistance is what we're proposing. So essentially the town's COVID nineteen related housing assistance program, which is a partnership with Mid-Central Community Action that the town has. So as council will recall, there was an allocation, an earlier allocation, towns received two. The first one was in the amount of about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That one was put in total toward housing assistance at the end of last year. And at this time, the second allocation, as you said, Mr. Mayor, is about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And based off of a, a number of things here, so I'll, I'll just go through them. About a year now worth of research doing in, into housing assistance and research and just carrying out a program. Almost daily contact with public service providers, other branches of other entities, local governments here and service providers, as well as research that's been done by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission here recently. Based on all of that, we believe that housing assistance is still the, the greatest need facing the community as relates, or that can be addressed with these CDBG CV funds. And as such, we're seeking to amend this five-year plan to, to go about that. So the way you do that is with a five-year, or is with a, a comment period, which will kick off this Thursday, February fourth and run, run eighteen days till Saturday, February twenty-first. During that time, any member of the public can send in comments via email to almost any town email address. I'm sure it'll get to the right place. But there's, there's a notice that's out there. As well, there'll be a public hearing, a virtual public hearing next Wednesday, February tenth from six to seven PM. Persons wishing to join that meeting need only contact me or again, anyone else here at the town and, and we'll get them the right info to join that meeting. But at that, at that meeting, that hearing, there'll be a discussion of basically just what's being proposed. And a little, we'll get into the weeds a little bit more about what this money can be used for and what we're proposing or how the town's COVID nineteen related housing assistance program functions. And after that, then we'll come to the town council seeking approval for that, that amendment, and that'll be March first. And at that time, just like tonight, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have or get into the details. But I'll, I'll add one more thing, and that's that this funding has to be put towards some cause, but put toward a cause. And we have a good justification for putting it toward this one. It just has to be done before the end of the town's fiscal year, as I said. So that is mandated that that be the case. It was funding that was received in this fiscal year, so it needs to be dedicated within it as well. So that said, if, you know, we go down the road here and maybe housing assistance isn't the greatest need. Maybe the federal government or the state of Illinois comes up with a different set of funds that can more easily address this or make a greater dent in housing assistance here that's desperately needed for those that have been impacted by either, either financially or worse by the pandemic. So if, if more funding comes along and maybe this CDBG CV funding can be put towards something else, a greater need at that time, that's, that's prerogative council has to make that decision later on down the road. And if if there needs to be some, if there needs to be some amount of money out reallocated, whatever amount might be left at that time, that can be done. So I just wanted to add that in there. This isn't, we, we have to make a, a use for it right now. We've got a great idea for how it can be used. We're confident that it could conceivably all be used for housing assistance, but happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
So if there are any questions, I would, I would couch that in the fact that indeed this is going to for public comment. And I think it might be more appropriate to see what that public comment is before we, we get into deep discussion on what's, what's happening here. Ms. Smith?
Just a repeat of the dates. So the public hearing, the public comment period is two-four to two-twenty-one?
That's right, yeah, eighteen days. And we can go a little shorter than we usually do that as, because of the pandemic. It just gives, we can kind of work through these things a little faster than it might usually take.
And, and how do people submit their public comments?
Those can be made just in writing to an address that's in the public notice and it'll go out in a press release as well. Or they, it can either be made in a, in a letter to the, to an address that's given or in email to me is, is fine. And my, all my contact info is out there as well.
Okay, and then the public hearing is on the tenth?
Yeah, Wednesday, fifth, yeah, sorry.
And they can contact you or check the website for the details. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. Mr. Long, with the public hearing, is that going to be available via Zoom as well or is that in person?
This, just over Zoom, yes, virtually. So in the, in the press release, it'll, that'll be going out here shortly. The public notice that'll be posted later too. There's instructions on how to go about getting registered for that, just like this meeting.
Okay, and is there an ability for them to call in if they don't have the ability to get on Zoom?
Yes, yeah, that's always a, always an option, yeah.
Alright. Since this is somewhat short notice, I'd kind of ask if we could maybe be a little bit proactive and contact some of the neighborhoods where you had placed boxes with forms for the last CDBG meeting go around so those residents know, because they may not, they may not know otherwise.
Sure, no, that's a good idea. And there's enough going on too, to, you know, keep, keep an eye out for different notices, that kind of thing. I think we could do that by reaching out, like we have been for the last few months, to property managers, landlords all, all throughout the community. So I think that's probably a good way to go about that. We can certainly do.
Yeah, and also maybe reach out to some of the folks that help folks in need and let them know, because I didn't realize until I got involved that there's such a large segment of our population that may have a regular phone, but they don't have internet access on that phone, you know, and that's kind of what I want to be sympathetic to. Because, you know, CBG funds that kind of caters towards folks in that type of situation. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Lorenz?
You know, United Way has been very involved with this and working with PATH. And quite a bit of notice is, is being, and public awareness is being done through their efforts on social media, billboards, things of that sort. So the town's been working closely with their housing coalition, which is a part of their COVID response task force. So I applaud the town staff, Mercy and Taylor for being part of that. And I think between efforts of what the town can do, as being suggested here, but also what's baked into the cake as far as things that United Way and that coalition is doing, we should be able to get the word out pretty well.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Yeah, just a quick, we've all kind of touched on that there's a
Put your hand in. That was a joke, I'm sorry.
So, almost had me there. We've all kind of touched on it a little bit, but obviously there's a significant need in the community for this COVID and otherwise. But, and as Ms. Lorenz noted, I've seen some of your efforts, Mr. Long, over the, the months on social media and website. But just appreciate, I know it's your job, but there's folks that are really hurting out there and I really appreciate all the efforts you're going to, to work with all the agencies and the neighborhoods and all the things that you guys have been doing to try to get the word out. Because it sorely needed our community and I appreciate all the stuff you're going to continue to do to try to get the word out and make sure that these funds get in the hands of people who can really need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long.
Thank you.
We have one public commenter at the end of the meeting tonight, if in the room.
I believe he is on the line.
And I believe it's Ron Ulmer. Ron, you've got three minutes? Are you connected, Ron?
He may not realize he's muted.
Sometimes when they're calling in, it might take them a minute to unmute themselves.
Mr. Ulmer, if you can hear us, you're, you're muted. We will give Mr. Ulmer a chance to work through this. I'm going to switch out of order here in a little bit if there are council concerns. Let's do that and we'll come back to Mr. Ulmer. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, Mayor. Just quickly, I believe, since our last meeting, the town has officially awarded four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our small business COVID grants. And I just wanted to congratulate, first, the fifty small businesses who applied and were successfully awarded some funds. And then, second, thank those businesses who applied but did not receive funds this time. And third, thank and extend appreciation to staff for what I am confident was a lot of work and probably a more complicated process working those grants than, than maybe we all realize. So thank you to staff and congratulations to those businesses and hope, you know, every little bit helps. And I'm sure that there are many more that need much more help. But hopefully that small business grant program is one that makes a positive impact for our small businesses here in the community. Thanks.
So I think, Mr. Preston, that staff probably got a little bit of reward in the sense that they got to see firsthand. they got to see firsthand some businesses genuinely moved and thanked thanked the town and the and the state and federal government profusely because it was a lifeline to some of these businesses. And I think it's important that we acknowledge you acknowledge that we acknowledge it as well. As Lorenz.
Excellent.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I just want to highlight a concern. You know, to watch what we see out there on social media and assume to be true or or completely factual, maybe it's just shading some of the truth. Anybody's watched the Netflix documentary called Social Dilemma, you know what I'm talking about. So you know, we've we've raised, we've raised one of them here tonight already with the with the brown water issue. You know, let's turn that into positive. Let's call it the clear water issue. The, you know, we got to, we got to make sure that that particularly we are mindful of what's out there. And when it's not accurate, that we stand up for integrity and honesty and facts. And and, you know, do that for for the sake of our of our community, of everyone of our town, the staff. You know, let's let's fight for the truth. You know, I know that municipalities and school boards are entering into their spring campaign season. But let's let's not get carried away with that and start carrying the water, so to speak, on some campaign issues that that may be, you know, as as council members, let's be council members first and and campaigners you know, second. So I'm concerned about some things I'm seeing out on social media. Thanks.
Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be relatively brief. Mr. Preston, I already touched on it. But I just want to share, I heard a few of us, Ms. Lorenz and Ms. Cummings, I think, and I know Ms. Smith and I were out handing out information about the small business grant program. And and we were trying to make businesses aware. I made a few phone calls, but I did hear back from a couple of businesses that were successful. And one of the comments is, thanks so much for all the information on this. I really love having my business in this town. That was from one of our local uptown businesses. I won't say who. But that was a quote from an email I got in response to them being made aware and successful in the grant. So thanks to staff, your little merry band of folks that plowed through all those applications and spent a lot of time doing that. You really made a difference in that work and getting money from from the state to the businesses. So thanks for all that work.
Thank you. Ms. Godaraju, did do we have our public commenter?
Yes, he's joining again.
And I don't see a mute button. Mr. Olmer, you have three minutes.
Can you hear?
Good. I don't see a mute button. Mr. Olmer, you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We've got you. Mr. Olmer, I'd ask you to turn off what's in your background because there's a delay. And we're getting quite a bit of echo.
Okay, all right, I did.
Thank you.
I want to address the expenditure of the money for the water main extension on West College as well as priorities. I was looking today and in the last 10 years, 11 years, the fee for system maintenance fee for water has increased 50% from 405 a month to 611 a month. As some of you may know, that in the one mile of Linden from college to Shelbourne, there have been six weeks in the 10 or 11 years I've lived here. I was told that there is a new main that will eventually be put in service or will be tapped for a part of this distance. But my overall comment is when I looked at the water departments re report in the annual plan and saw how many water mains need replacement. I cannot see spending 4475,000 or whatever it is, 560,000, whatever it is on extending a water main to an area where there are no customers for certain. But in addition to that, I just think that something has to be done to ensure that we can replace more old, bad, leaky water mains than we have been doing. I think that's a top priority. We we've had considerable water fee increases over the last 10 or 11, 15 years. And yet it seems like the pipes in general aren't in that great a condition in in many areas of the town, especially older areas of the town. So I would appreciate the council redirecting money or looking at what needs to be done to better maintain and replace old pipes throughout normal rather than building putting pipes in a cornfield. There seems to be plenty of water in that area. And always betting on the future speculating that businesses will come if you build it is rather risky given that water mains throughout the department throughout the town need replacement. Thank you.
Motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston.
Hi.
Mr. McCarthy.
Hi.
Ms. Cummings.
Hi.
Mr. Nord.
Hi.
Ms. Smith.
Hi.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Hi.
Mayor Kuz.
Hi, we are adjourned.